Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Mr Chairman.
Welcome to our next, this full council. I will now hand over to my chaplain, Father Graham Bott.
Thank you, Chairman. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. O God, the Creator of all, and Ruler of all, we ask your blessing on members of this county council who have been called to show care and responsibility in the community. We pray that they may have wisdom, patience, and the ability to listen to one another and to the needs and desires of those whom they represent, that through the dedication of their hard work, the people of this county may duly prosper and the life of all its people be enhanced. We ask this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, at this time of difficulty, where people face hardship, challenges of life, we may be always mindful of their needs, that the decisions we take will be in the interests of all, that we may build a community which embodies respect and love of one another. We ask this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I invite you now, if you wish to join, in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, for ever and ever. Amen.
Please be seated. It is great to see everyone here this morning, but can I give a special welcome to councillor Ian Lawson? Ian, it is great to have you with us again. Item one, apologies. Mr Chairman, we have received apologies from seven members: Jill Burnett, Mark Taville, John Francis, Philip Hudson, Said Hussain, Thomas J, and Bernard Peters. Thank you. Item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest? Thank you. Confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting. I move at the minutes of the council meeting held on the 19th of May 2022, be signed as a true record. Is that agreed? Thank you. Next item, chairman's correspondence. Her Majesty's, the Queen's birthday honours. I'm sure that members will wish to join me in congratulating Catherine Mann, the council's interim Assistant Director of Culture, Rural and Safer Communities, in being awarded MBE for her national work promoting a literate, kind society, as well as being the head of the county's larbi service for more than a decade. Other Staffordshire recipients of honours include: OBE for Hiltha Huren-Iqbal; MBE, DL, so she's already MBE and Deputy Lieutenant from Brockton; Regional Prevention Coordinator at the Department for Education for Services to Social Cohesion; OBE for Mr Dr David Lawson-Jacks of Stafford, for services for garden history and conservation; MBE for Pamela Bostock of Tamworth, Consultant Occupational Therapist at Midlands Partnership NHS Foundation Trust for service to adults with progressive neurological conditions; MBE for Glenn Gerald Parks of Stoke-on-Trent, for services for homeless and rough sleepers at Fenton in Stoke-on-Trent; MBE for Douglas Robertson Wright, DL, of Woodlay near Aldridge, for services for economy and a charity in the West Midlands; BM for Sheila Anne Cooper of Chedle, a first aid trainer instructor in the Chedle Division of the St John's Ambulance in Staffordshire; BM for Daniel Mark Kinsey of Wombourn, Chair of Wombourn Parish Council, for service to the community of Wombourn, particularly during Covid-19. Now we move on to the sad event. Honorary alderman Derek Davis, OBE. It is my sad duty to inform the council of the death on the evening of Monday, 11th of July 2022, of former county councillor Derek Davis. Mr Davis represented the Chadsmore Canaghchase County Electoral Division on the county council from 1985 to 2021. Mr Davis served on a number of the council's committees, including the Pensions Committee, Pensions Panel, Audit and Standard Committee, Staffordshire Health and Scrutiny Committee, Corporate Review, and the Assets and Budget Scrutiny Committee. Mr Davis was awarded an OBE in the 2010 Queen's Honours List for his service to local governments, and particularly his work as chairman of Stoke-on-Trent and Staffordshire Combined Fire and Rescue Authority from 2001 to 2009. He was also appointed as an honorary alderman upon his retirement from the county council in 2021. I will now call anyone who would like to speak. Councillor Mike Sutherland.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, members. Derek Davis. Chairman's outlined to us that he served 36 years in this chamber. Formidable, formidable, outstanding commitment, but I will share with you that in Canaghchase, he served 22 years. That is a lifetime. You add that together, 50, 50 odd years, because he started in 71 and finished in 21. Brilliant. So he started his political life from a young man, and he ended up an elder statesman. And personally, that's when I got to learn a little bit about Derek, when he became the elder statesman. He told me of his love when he was on the fire service, and he's got a treasured fireman's axe in his house. And I said, well, what will you do if the police come round? He said, I'll just show them my prize, i.e. the fireman's axe that he got awarded. So he proudly displays that in his home. Many of us will know of his love for wolves, but he tells me, and I think he was bragging, that he was a formidable tennis player. I also know of his love of horse racing, and he was a really good supporter of the local arts. And I attended one or two functions in Chadsmore, where he invited various visitors to come and talk about their lives and their association with Chadsmore. And he was actually a perfect gentleman, and I mean that in the most sincere of terms. He would cast his eye around, and it would pick you out, and it would come over, and I saw him just go to about four or five people. And he would also play tricks. We know that when we attend certain things, we do do that probably on a political platform. And I attended one of his sessions, and it was to do with the local arts, and on the front row, I saw a lot of Labour colleagues, and I went and sat at the back. Derek got up, walked to the back, and said to the person I was sitting next to, I was having a conversation, would you mind if I just borrowed this young gentleman, which was quite flattering? And he walked me to the front and sat in next to me. I said, Derek, there's no need to do that. He said, yeah, but it will wind that lot up over there. So he had a wicked sense of humour. So Chairman, if I may, I'd like on behalf of all Canaghchase county councillors here today to offer sincere and deep condolences to Muriel and Mark and their family. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs Charlotte Atkins, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As has been said, Derek devoted his life to public service. He served 37 years here, but as a councillor, 50 years, which is, you know, I mean, that's a double murder sentence, isn't it? I mean, it's amazing. And of course, he loved his community. If he was a stick of rock, I think he would have had Chadsmore printed right the way through him. He loved his arts, he loves his people, he loves his sports. So he was really very much a Chadsmore person. But as has been said, Derek was particularly proud of his period during, on the Fire Authority, and his contribution in terms of its development, and that was something which he was incredibly proud of. Derek and Muriel were a very close and formidable couple. It's sad that Derek died before seeing his wife, Muriel, becoming an alderman this week. He would have been extremely proud. They created quite a Labour dynasty. Their son, Mark, was both a Labour councillor and a Labour parliamentary candidate, and he then went on to marry Jane Heggie, who worked for the Labour Party and several Labour MPs before becoming the coordinator for the Labour Women's Network, which encourages women to go into politics. But Derek was definitely a one-off. You could never predict what he was going to say, and you could certainly not ask him to say anything, because he wouldn't say it unless he wanted to. He was very much his own man. And he had a way with words. He was someone, quite a wordsmith. And it's sad that his illness took away his ability to speak as he wanted to, and he found that deeply frustrating. But I know that he had friends all over the chamber, and I know that everyone will remember him with great affection. He was certainly someone who inspired people to enter into politics, and I hope that his legacy will live on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs Atkins. Mr Atkins.
Thank you, Chairman. Derek, where do you begin? I got elected in 1987, so by-election, two years after. And just cast your mind back to the days then, there was a landslide majority for the Conservatives in Parliament. We'd had the miners' strikes, we'd had the Falklands, we'd had a whole range of things. Derek nearly got deselected because of his support for nuclear arms in the Labour Party, and there was a lot of rows going on in Canagh, because they were all unilateralists, nuclear disarmament people. And his background in estate and land management meant that quite often, he'd be almost on the crossing the floor, I suppose, because he supported an awful lot of people. My first meetings were when he was working for Alton Towers on their eastern access road, which we were very much against, and so we were jumping up and down about things. But his friendship outside the chamber was, you know, really good. We'd always have a natter. And 37 years, well, I've been on here 35, I can tell you, it is a lifetime, and you get to know what was going on. But back then, in 1987, there were 82 members in this chamber, there was Stoke-on-Trent as well, there were only about 20, 21, 22 Conservatives. Everybody else was Labour. There was one Conservative in Stoke. So it was a different sort of world. And Derek was the deputy leader of the Labour Group. He ended up being the leader of the Labour Group when it got down to three, but you know, that was beside the point. He was the experience that he got of the fire service, which he really did, you know, he really did go to that, and he was on the police authority, and he was on various things. And it was a committee structure back then, it wasn't a cabinet. It was a very different sort of council, where you had to deal with backbenchers. And there was a, buried in the depths of how the council worked, and it's something that Derek was very keen on, was the, there was a personnel committee, and beneath that there was a personnel panel. And I've always said, back in 1997, when it got abolished, it was the worst thing that we ever did, because prior to that, if an officer wanted to increase the workforce or anything, it had to go to the personnel panel. And you could just have one person object of the five, and it had to go to another committee, and everybody turned up for it to get through. And I can always remember, you know, they were always trying to get more social workers, but it was a ruse to get more money. And Derek consistently voted against the Labour Group policy in the personnel panel. It did never get reported, because it was a Part Two committee. But if he didn't agree with something, he stuck with it, and he'd vote with it, and he wouldn't say, as Charlotte has said, he wouldn't say anything that he didn't believe in in this chamber. As I referred to earlier on, he nearly got deselected because his belief in the nuclear deterrent. Derek was a man who stuck to his principles. I was on the opposite, Keith City, where I used to sit. I used to argue with him many a time about things in here, but outside, you'd be friends, and that's what it's all about. And my thoughts are with Muriel and Mark. I've had arguments with Muriel many a time as well, you know, but that's beside the point. That's politics. But it's, I'm just glad that I'm here to remember those times prior to 1997, because 99% of you weren't here.
Thank you. I now call upon everyone to stand for a short time, for a moment's silence, in remembrance of councillor Derek Davis. Thank you. Councillor Alan White, will you move consideration of your statement, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I move consideration of the leader's statement.
Item one, Household Support Fund. Councillor Mark Sutton, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. The details of the Household Support Fund are there for everybody to see. But just in a brief explanation, this is just a, this is another tranche of funding that we've had from the Department of Works and Pensions to support vulnerable families and children around the county. This particular part of the fund is from May of this year through to the autumn, and in total is 5.5 million. That is split between three areas of business. The stuff, the education support fund, which is for children in receipt of free school meals, and that links in with a later item on the agenda, the half the holiday activity and fund scheme. Also included in that is support for our care leavers, who all get part of that grant. Second bit, we're working with boroughs and districts to support people with food, essential supplies, and fuel. And thirdly, we've added 1.4 million to the winter warmth project money. And overall, that funding is split between a third for children and families, a third for people of pensionable age, and the other across the board. Excellent scheme that we're running and benefiting thousands of vulnerable people around this county.
Okay, item two, Staffordshire Better Care Fund. I'll first of all call the leader.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd like to draw members' attention to a slight error in the wording of this part of the leader's statement. In the second paragraph and the second line down, it says, has the associated funding and have approved the 2022/2023 BCF plan. That should read, Mr Chairman, and noted that the Health and Wellbeing Board is required to approve the 2022/2023 Staffordshire BCF. Mr Chairman, this is a matter of process. The BCF is finally signed off by the Health and Wellbeing Board. That hasn't yet happened, it is due to happen, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs Charlotte Atkins.
Yes, I just wanted to raise the issue of disabled facilities grants. I'm perfectly aware that the county council just passports the money through to district and borough councils, but my concern is that as the BCF is about trying to help people stay within their own homes, that I'm very concerned about the huge underspending across both district and borough councils, excluding, I think, Tamworth. And therefore, this money is not being invested in helping people adapt their homes so they can remain comfortable in the homes for longer. And I wondered whether the county council could do anything to encourage district and borough councils to promote this more effectively, particularly, I would think, in the private rented sector, where we have some of the poorest housing conditions. And it just seems to me that it's a huge waste for that to be sitting in bank accounts rather than helping people with disabilities live more fulfilling lives. And I do hope that we can try and promote that. It has been extended to community groups, so that, for instance, access to community buildings and suchlike can be improved. But I do think that there's a lot to be done to promote this particular scheme, which is so vital to so many people with disabilities, particularly as they age. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs Julia Jesel, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Councillor Atkins is quite right. Across the county, there is a variation between those authorities who have spent their budget, and the total budget for Staffordshire is just over 10 million. There are some authorities that do have underspends. This is something that the leader of the council is actually taking to the leaders' board, because you're quite right, it is money that needs to be spent to help to maintain people in their own homes, and we are as anxious as anyone that anything we can do to help to facilitate that, for that money to be invested as quickly as possible, that that happens. I do know from my experience when I was on East Staffordshire Borough Council, that the process can be a bit protracted and made worse by access to building contractors to get work done. It's becoming quite difficult, but it is something that is being picked up, and as I say, the leader is taking it to the leaders' board for a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. The leader.
And councillor Jesel has quite rightly pointed out, it is an issue for the leaders' board. All nine leaders of districts, boroughs, and the county across the county of Staffordshire recognise how important the DFG is to residents, so they can live independently in their own homes. That's, from that is where dignity is derived, and we want people to be able to live their lives in dignity in their own homes, and the DFG is the route to achieving that. Please rest assured that all the leaders across the county of Staffordshire recognise that, and we are doing our utmost to get that money out into places where it's needed.
Thank you. Staffordshire means back to business. Councillor Philip White.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, thank you very much, Chair. So the report in front of you this month rightly has a focus on jobs and employment. We know, we know that happily the Staffordshire economy is proving quite resilient despite the challenges, particularly around inflation, that we see in the economy at the moment. But we have a, we have a real challenge that comes with our low unemployment rates and the need that our businesses have to continue to fuel their activities with more employees and more skilled employees. So there are three really important schemes here in front of you. The first of those is a new scheme that we're rolling out over the course of the summer, which is our Staffordshire Jobs Brokerage Scheme. This fits in a gap between the national jobs platforms that exist, that you'll be familiar with, and the work of organisations like Job Centre Plus, and it's geared towards linking people in Staffordshire with jobs in Staffordshire, but also crucially with a, with a broker, an individual that you can work with, who can also help you with a skills package if there's something that you need in order to be able to access that job. It is, I'm not going to say it's unique, because I can't say that for certain, but it's certainly a relatively unusual scheme and something that hopefully will make a real difference in terms of helping some of our businesses to find the people they need. The second scheme that's mentioned here is one you've heard a bit about before, which is our Apprenticeship 500 scheme, part of our Back to Business programme, where we're providing support to small businesses to recruit apprentices, both in terms of training costs, which is common, but actually with salary costs as well. And typically for smaller businesses, they struggle often to find the salary to pay for an apprentice whilst they're building up their skills and their usefulness to the business. So we're doing both of those. We're at 400 or so out of the 500 now, and I'm really keen that we, we as elected members, promote this scheme to employers in our parts of the county, so that we can get that extra 100 people in the scheme. I'd love to come back to Cabinet to ask for a bit more funding, to turn it into more than a 500, and I think we will get there. And the final scheme is Ignite, which I am confident in saying is unique around the country at the moment, but we'd love for others to pick it up, and that's entrepreneurship training for final year college students, to help them understand the world of work, make them work ready, but also to encourage them, if they're interested in doing it, in setting up their own businesses whilst they're very new to the world of work, and giving them the skills that they need to be able to try that successfully. And we've had 12,000 people through that scheme in a year now, which is an enormous chunk of our college leaver cohort, another big success scheme, and again geared towards making sure that we get people into the workplace ready to do the things that businesses need or to set up their own. So three really great schemes there, good examples of where the county council does things that are relevant to our economy, not competing with the things that the private sector does or other organisations, but filling gaps and doing things that are useful to keep our businesses growing and thriving. Thank you very much, Chair.
Councillor Mrs Gylaine Paddeasy, please.
Thank you. Chair, I have three separate questions on three separate bullet points, if that's... Oh, okay, thank you. Chair, on the Apprenticeship 500 scheme, could I ask, please, who checks and vets all the employers for their suitability to support a young apprentice, and what sort of monitoring of outcome takes place, please? On the Ignite project, we're told that 12,000 college students have attended this training. Could we have some idea of actually how many young people then went on to set up their own businesses as a result of the training? On the fourth bullet point, it talks about young people aged 18 to 24, and there seems to be an emphasis on encouraging those young people to go into the gaps in employment following Covid, such as health and social care and hospitality, and that's important and that must happen. Could I remind the leader, though, please, that in that age group of 18 to 24, we also have graduates who worked hard for their degrees of three and four years and are quite literally paying the price for it? So could we please make sure that we give them the opportunity to apply their knowledge and their qualifications to further their careers so that we're not de-skilling them and that we're not wasting their talent and their economic potential? Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Alan White, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you councillor Paddeasy for a detailed set of questions. And because I'm last on, unfortunately, I'm not able to answer the detail of those questions right now, but I can assure you that we will get back to you. I have been reliably informed that the vetting process is thorough, as you'd expect, with the local authority engaging with employers. And I can't read that now, so I'm not going to even try. So can I undertake to write to you, or get the deputy leader, there's delegation in action, get the deputy leader to write to you with the answers to those questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Final Financial Outturn Report 2021/22. Councillor Mrs. Atkins, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Cabinet is putting aside monies to cope with inflation, but what are the implications for the council of the huge costs of social care reform? We know that the funding presently being provided by government is not going to be sufficient, and I understand that the overall cost is going to be something like £64 million a year to be met by the County Council. Already, the request for £520,000 to carry out adult social care reform has been denied. So where does this leave the County Council when despite all the talk about integrated care, we know that the NHS takes the lion's share of the National Insurance Levy, and we could face the reversal of that levy should you decide to choose Liz Truss as your new leader and Prime Minister?
Thank you. Councillor Mr. Ian Parry, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just, I will come back to those points because I think it's a really important point that you raised. But just on the financial outturn of last year, it was a very, very difficult year, and obviously, we must pay tribute to the hard work of everyone who works at Staffordshire County Council, who's a budget holder, who's responsible for delivering services to maintaining really good financial controls within the council in a very difficult and chaotic period for the community, for society, for the country, for the council. These things are never easy. But when we finished that budget and set this year's budget, we were not talking about inflation at almost double digits, we were not talking about shortages and pressures, economic pressures that are quite serious now. We reported yesterday our quarter one outturn, and the pressures now upon the council are inflation and really serious implications on the council. There are serious implications on all of us as individuals of inflation. That's why I believe that we should, as a country, and for our government, to bear down on it because of all those consequences. But for us as a council, we've had to protect investments by putting additional funding in there to cover the cost of inflation. And as far as our, to ensure that I don't dabble in pushing out figures that I'm not accurate about, just to refer to, for example, our highway spend, which we allocate £50 million for capital this year, an additional £50 million, that is. We've also had to put an extra £10 million worth of funding into that just to cover inflation, because otherwise, all of that investment would just be gobbled up with inflation. So that's the extent of it, something like £17 million worth of inflation costs across highways and across the piece. We've also added a million, and then yesterday we agreed another million towards highway transformation, and we've had to, if you like, hedge against that by putting an extra £2 million to cover inflation. So as you can see across the council, you know, we've got pressures on inflation which behaves in different ways depending on the commodity you're dealing with, depending on the supply chain that you're dealing with. It's different levels of inflation at different times, so we all have to manage that. That is very much a focus at the moment. The other area of challenge and complexity is around children's transformation, which is a big focus of attention for the council and has been for some time. Great progress made there, but still some way to go, and therefore, at our first quarter was still challenging. We've had to put an extra million, extra £6 million to support that. Just coming back to the, I think, really important point that councillor Mrs. Atkins raises about the Health and Social Care Bill. If this becomes enacted and we are therefore to implement it, the cost pressures on the council could be around £70 or £100 million over the course of the MTFS. It's huge numbers for which we don't really have, in a sense, allocation for that. We were hoping, of course, that the NI levy, and who knows what the future of the NI levy will be, was going to come towards local government after a year or two. We don't see any signs of that. We are, as a council, having grown up conversations with government, along with lots of other councils, about the impact of this, and we are wondering whether actually that's starting to resonate and for them to understand. The implications of this are serious. We are making preparations, and as I say, those big numbers are the ones that stretch over the course of the MTFS. In the early stages, obviously, it starts off still huge, but potentially more manageable, but still totally unmanageable in its present form, and something needs to give. We need to have further funding or something needs to change in terms of the way that act is implemented.
Thank you. Councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councillor Parry set out very clearly the challenges we're facing with adult social care in particular, and also alluded to the Children's Transformation Programme, which is a challenge. We continue to lobby government, but at the moment, the shape of the government is difficult to predict. For some of us who went to the LGA Conference, Local Government's Association Conference, a few weeks ago, we had the opportunity to speak to the then-Secretary of State, Michael Gove, about the challenge of funding social care, and I was able to put a question directly to him about the need for half of the NI levy to come to local authorities in order to cover the costs that councillor Parry so articulately put before you a moment ago. It appears that Michael Gove is no longer the Secretary of State, so until we have a bit of stability in government, Mr. Chairman, it's quite difficult to predict how this will go. Thank you.
Thank you. Corporate Delivery Plan 2022/23. Councillor Colin Graytrix, please.
Thank you, Chairman. This follows on quite neatly from the previous item. I think I made a note of councillor Parry's comment about a chaotic period that we've been through. And when you look at what local authorities throughout the country are suffering, you could say that local authorities have been blown away by circumstances rather than being very much in control. We just had the discussion about adult social care, the whole aspect of how we're recovering from Covid, both in terms of how we've had to deal with the interface that we have with the health service, but also with trying to get the strength back into our towns and high streets, the previous item that councillor Philip White spoke about, and trying to get businesses encouraged. And that's to say nothing of the problems we have with continual road defect issues. So you could say that we're somewhat blown around by circumstances rather than being in control, and therefore, it's probably as well to just throw up your hands and say we're not able to plan. But the opposite's the case. We desperately need to have a corporate plan, and there's a reference here to the corporate plan and the strategic plan of 2022 to 2026. And certainly, there's a reference here to the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Committee, and I think it's becoming on all members to recognise that the corporate plan is a measuring stick. Without having something like the one-year corporate plan and the quarterly intervals that we have to look at the integrated performance, we don't have the measuring stick in order to assess how well the authority is doing against its original plan. So despite the adversity that it faces, I think it's quite valuable that we have this report, and I welcome the fact that it's being monitored regularly.
Thank you. Councillor Mark Sutton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would try and encourage members to have a look a little bit beyond the headlines in the corporate delivery plan and look a little bit at the areas that each Cabinet member has got responsibility for. Within the, I'll take this opportunity just to explain some of them within my portfolio and the importance of them. And they raise from embedding the transformation system, as that was just alluded to, the corporate parenting strategy, children's public health, implementing a partnership approach across the county, and the important work in early years and early help. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Julia Jesel, please.
Yeah, okay, do that one. Thank you very much, Chairman. I don't wish to disagree with one of my own councillors, but I think in terms of what this authority has achieved over the last few years cannot be described as chaotic. I think we've risen to the challenges, they've been unusual challenges, but I'm one of these people, I don't know about you, in the media, I get fed up of the overuse of chaotic and emergency. If you're living in certain parts of the world, yes, there are real emergencies like Ukraine. If you live in certain parts of the world, yes, there is real chaos like Sri Lanka. In this country, we have risen to unusual challenges, as we always have, and I hope, regardless of politics, we always will. And I think this corporate plan has set out that whilst for the previous two years, our focus has been on other things, i.e. the pandemic, we have never taken our eye off the ball, which is what we're here for, which is deliver good services for the people out there. And I think this corporate plan sets out how we're going to achieve that against the backdrop of our strategic plan. That's what we're elected to do, that is what I think we have done. And I do object to everything being related to chaos. Within this authority, and I refer to all councillors, regardless of politics, I don't believe we operate in a chaotic way. I think we act in a responsible, mature and responsive way to our electorate, and so do our officers. They work diligently under our direction. So I would like to put a mark down that actually I would hate the public out there to think that we acted in a chaotic way. We don't, and this plan, I believe, just sets out the principles under which we operate now and will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jesel, and I second everything you've said from the chair. Thank you. Councillor Jonathan Price, please.
Thank you, Chairman. And just to reiterate the points that councillor Sutton said, I would encourage all members to read through the corporate delivery plan. Just wanted to highlight a couple of issues around education, which is a foremost part of that delivery plan. So as far as SEND, as you know, we've had a SEND local area visit at the beginning of the year. Following the publication, we're responding to the areas that require further improvement as detailed within the Accelerated Progress Plan and linking this, of course, to our SEND strategy. We're also pleased to see the activities we are delivering and are identified within the same green paper consultation, which we will be responding to in the next couple of days. And we recognise there is still an awful lot to do in SEND, and with our partners, we are determined to address these. Some of this will, of course, be challenging because of the increasing demand on finance and the resource available. The Department for Education has published the white paper, Opportunities for All: Strong Schools with Great Teachers for Your Child. Unfortunately, my notes have died. So that'll be me cut short, but thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Ian Parry, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Just perhaps another stab at the way we deliver our corporate plan and our medium-term financial strategy and budget. We are, as politicians in this chamber, charged at times with dealing with difficult situations. Sometimes those situations that confront us can appear chaotic in front of us, disordered, in fact, I would say. And often, things like a pandemic would appear to you to be disordered if you didn't respond in a calm and measured way. And I think that's what this council has managed to achieve in so many ways. At a time which I would describe as being confronted with something which had the potential to become very challenging and unravel very quickly, and the pressure upon this council to act in that calm and measured way was, I think, delivered with a certain level of confidence and certainty that allowed us to get through and manage what could be something that's in front of you, that is very challenging and very disordered and, yes, chaotic. That does not mean that this organisation or our response or our capacity and capability is in any way disordered, quite the reverse, something which is certain and assured. What we're very keen on in this council is that we remain in control and not let events control us. And we're very keen on the fact that we control our finances and not let our finances control us. That's why we always like to get ahead of the problem, the problems that we've been discussing this morning, like inflation, like transition, like adult social care costs. Those are the things which we are now dealing with and grappling with before they become a problem which we find difficult to meet. So I'm a politician. I deal in chaos.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs. Gillian Paddeasy, please.
Thank you, Chair. A cheer in the room went out when we were told how efficient we are and we're not chaotic and there's not an emergency. Then please go out and tell those, tell the mothers who don't know where their child's next meal is coming from, people who are dying waiting for ambulances, try telling them that and see how many cheers we get out there, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Alan White, please.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Councillor Paddeasy talks to broader points, some of which are just not in our control. Where those areas where there are failures in public services, do we sit on our hands and do nothing? No, we don't. Speak to councillor Perth about the work he's doing with West Midlands Ambulance Service to make sure that he highlights the shortcomings of the ambulance service in the Staffordshire area. Speak to councillor Sutton about the Holidays Activities and Food Programme, which he highlighted earlier. Speak to councillor Sutton about the holidays activities and food programme, which he highlighted earlier, tackling those people who are struggling with precisely what you've just described. But turning to the strategic plan and more directly the Corporate Delivery Plan of 2022, 2023. For those of you that haven't seen it, you'll see individual portfolio holders named with areas of responsibility that they have to deliver for. There's no hiding from it. And precisely what they've got to deliver is clear for everybody to see. The SLT lead, the senior leadership team lead associated with that portfolio holder's area is also identified, as is the WLT lead. Which turns me to the staff that support us and make things happen here in this council. The strategic plan and the Corporate Delivery Plan cannot happen without the thousands of staff working for us here in Stafford and across the county and our partners in the districts and boroughs. And I want to turn to them in particular, to thank them for the calm, level-headed way they continue to deliver our services across the county. I was with other councils last night, and you do see councils who run around with their hair on fire and their pants on fire, shouting and screaming, "Oh no, all is going wrong. It doesn't happen here." And that's a tribute to our staff who respond calmly, collected, with a sense of responsibility because they know that in order to get the job done and to give our communities the confidence they need that the council knows what it's doing, that is the style that they adopt. And I have to say, within this chamber, overwhelmingly, the councillors that I work with are exactly the same. You're a tribute to your communities. You lead from the front and you do so in a cool, calm, and rational way. And I think that's the style that Staffordshire County Council has. It's a style that we should be proud of and it's a style that should continue into the future, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Leader. Digital connectivity strategy in Staffordshire. Councillor Mark Whittington.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, apologies for being late. I had a minor, not an emergency or a disruption, just something to deal with before I came here. I'd like to speak, please, on this item. I think it's incredibly important and I shall tell you why. But before I start, I'd like to sort of say that at the moment, we're in a really good place as a county. We've got 96% of the county enabled to superfast, which means that basically they can, that people should have a minimum of 28 gigs. So they can all watch Netflix, although most of them are taking the subscriptions away now. So that's not perhaps as important as it was. And the reason we've got 96% is because Staffordshire County Council has had, over the last 10 years, a fantastic team working on this, a team that's worked with BT, who've got the contract eventually to roll out superfast. And it has worked so well and the team have worked incredibly well. And I hope Simon passes it back to them, how well they've done in the past. I've got to applaud the aspiration of 100 gigabit by 2030. I'd like to see 100 gigabit as soon as possible, actually, in there. And I think 2030 is a target and aspiration, and I think we can manage much better sooner, quicker. The reason that I really wanted to speak on this was on item, on bullet point three, which was enable rural and digital isolated communities where market intervention has failed. Now, the final 4% really is the majority of rural areas. Now, as a rural county, 65% of Staffordshire is rural. Obviously, there's a big area and a lot of people to cover in that bit, so it's the hardest bit. The final 4% always was going to be the hardest bit. But what it means is that we can concentrate on those areas and look, instead of just increasing the copper wire and everything, and a lot of work's been done by BT, stringing fibre cable onto poles. So I would expect at least some of those 4% to go straight onto fibre to premise, which would be brilliant for those communities and businesses that are out there. And in terms of the business aspect of this, the importance is incredible. Since lockdown, a lot of people from London or wherever have decided they want to live somewhere beautiful in the country and still work as they did before, work from home. And that's why it's important that we do actually start and enable these businesses to work from home. Social care and health, we've got a lot of new innovations. They need digital to work. Farming, in terms of just doing your single farm payments and suchlike, we need to have a good system there. And then, of course, it's not just farming in the rural areas. There's a lot of rural businesses. And they do need a better provision than they've got at the moment. And basically, members, what I'm going to say to you is probably a little bit contentious, but we have got tolls in the country because they're rural lanes. And tractors cause it and heavy lorries cause it. But at the end of the day, if you want to be fed, you've got to have those tractors and those lorries. And that's just a fact of life. But I feel personally that a good fibre connection is almost an extra bit of infrastructure that we can't do without. So, Simon, best of luck. And as I've said before, if you want any help from me, the door's always open. Thank you.
I've got four more speakers and two of those are farmers. Councillor Jill Heath, please.
Thank you. Yes, I want to endorse everything that Mark said, please. And do I have to press this again? I think the 4% that isn't done is in rural, my division. And just to plead as well, we want some mobile phone signals as well. There are parts in my division where you cannot use your mobile phone. Must be very, very frustrating for the people who live there. It's frustrating for me if I'm just driving through to villages. So, yeah, plead for the mobile phone as well as the digital, whatever.
Councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm speaking in support of Mark. And the 4%, it's all very well praising themselves, and we have done a good job of rolling out superfast broadband. But those that haven't got it really do feel aggrieved. I go to the 14 of my parish councils and I'd say about 10 of them have got terrible connection, terrible broadband, and just say, "We're forgotten." So when there's all the talk about levelling up, there's a region in this country that gets forgotten because it's dispersed across all the regions, and that's the rural communities. It can be in Lincolnshire, Cornwall, Devon, it could be North Yorkshire, Staffordshire, Morelands, East Staffordshire and Marpatch. They're all dispersed. But with modern technology moving forward, there should be a means of getting better connectivity to these communities. Mark's quite right about people working from home out in the countryside. That leads to another discussion that HR need to talk about. People drawing London wages and living in cheaper accommodation in Staffordshire and not having to commute, should they be paid as much. There are an awful lot of debates that this country needs to embark on. And just saying, "Well, we've done a really good job and we'll forget the last 4%," is not on. It needs some levelling up money to get there. They are dispersed. You can say they choose to live in the countryside. A lot of them don't. They have to work there. On, I'll tell you what, would you like to drive a high-tech tractor for £12 an hour? No, you wouldn't. And that's the problem we have. We can't recruit people. And if we can't recruit people, and the reason we can't pay them anymore is because you won't pay anymore for your food. But you will be doing soon. You will be doing soon. The Ukraine has shown how fragile food security is in this country. And connectivity like this into the countryside is the one way to boost food production in this country. So level up and get on with it. And Simon, you'll have my support.
Councillor David Smith, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I hope I'm not seen as a Luddite. Some people may feel I am, but it concerns me not the pace at which this is going, which I think is superb and I think it's great that we are going to make the progress that we are, but what the implications are. And I'm not at all sure that we as members or the community in general recognise what's happening to within our society. We look at the revolution that's come about as the result of Covid, that's brought people much, much quicker into working from home. And for many, many people, this is a good thing and it works well and it works well for the companies that employ them and it perhaps works well for the council. But the consequences of that is that we employ a moving population of young people that come into the organisation, not just the council, but into every business. And that social interaction that comes about is a vital part of the growth and development of the businesses that we have. And so I feel great concern about working from home. I particularly think of young people still working with their family home, where they don't have the facilities to effectively work from home. So I have a concern that that's bringing about, particularly as far as people's mental health is concerned. But also, Chairman, moving on from that, it has a massive effect on what we're going to do as far as our future policy is concerned, not just as this council, but all the district councils that we have. I know from personal experience in Lichfield that we set out a vision for what we saw that was right at the time. But circumstances change dramatically. And I think that the growth of the communications network that we now have has seen that great change, and we have to be fast on our feet to be able to make that move. Offices, as a result of working from home, are closing like there is no tomorrow. You only have to look at the situation in London to see what the impact has been. So, Chairman, I have a concern about where we're going to and that we're moving fast enough for we as councillors and the community at large to keep in touch with what the implications are of the changes that have been made. And I would sincerely hope that we have this matter discussed at the Leaders' Board, which would seem to be an ideal platform to look at how changes are going to be made. We will not live tomorrow the way we lived yesterday, and we need to recognise that. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Colin Graetrix, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I empathise with the comments of councillor Smith. In another place, I'm currently Chair of Litchfield District Council, and I decided not to have a charity existing. And I've created a body which is encouraging people to get online, particularly those of senior age. Because it's very clear to me, as councillor Smith has just said, if we're not careful, we'll move faster and faster towards a digital age and disenfranchise more and more people. And I think there are two things. I mean, the whole aspect of the social interaction is something that's of concern. But the other thing is that there are a lot of people over a certain age who want to be helped to be part of that future generation of digital use. Interesting, as I've done my research, I've found out different things. There's about 3 million people in the country who have not got access to a smartphone. 3 million people not got access in some way, through a family member or through themselves, to a smartphone. Of those 3 million people, 2 million are over 70. So if we're not careful, we're creating a race of people who are, you know, very digitally aware and digitally connected, but those that are not are being disenfranchised. So I think it's down to us as members to recognise that. Councillor Smith referred to the Leaders' Board. But I think all members should be aware of that and work with volunteer organisations to try. There are people like age concern that do this as well. So there are organisations out there. I should mention that one of the organisations I'm working with is the Buddy System, which is a Staffordshire County Council exercise. And I'm sure it happens elsewhere in the county, but they have a Monday and a Wednesday club in the library, obviously encouraging footfall into the library. There's a sense behind it from our point of view. But there's also a sense behind almost putting your arms around people and saying, "Yes, we can help you." So if somebody's got a device that they just need a password set up on or a bit of help to get online or maybe somebody to visit and do their broadband password, that's the sort of thing we should be encouraging as local members.
Councillor Simon Tagg, please.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the comments really on this strategy. We just discussed the Corporate Delivery Plan, didn't we, Mr. Chairman? And key to that in there, one of the things that my name is against is delivering this digital connectivity and this new strategy. So I'm really pleased that we put it in Cabinet just recently and it starts, continues our journey in ensuring we've got a connected county. And what I want to see is one of the most connected counties in the country. I think we're on course to deliver that, building on what happened with the superfast rollout, which councillor Whittington mentioned. And that's been a really brilliant scheme over the years and has got, as you say, that up to 96, almost 97% connectivity. What we aim for in the gigabit rollout is to get to 100% by 2030. But the Open Market Research Plan that was put in place reveals that by 2025, we hope to get up to 82% of properties online, and that's businesses as well. I think key to what councillor David Smith said was about working from home. Well, we're going to connect businesses to superfast. They are 2 gigabyte to supplement the superfast. And that's really important for businesses to give them the opportunity to be world beaters. They have to be world beaters in the digital realm as well. I think we mentioned mobile connectivity in the rural area particularly. And part of the strategy is to roll out that 5G connections across the county because for some people, we will not be able to connect them to the gigabit system by, you know, wires or whatever. We're going to have to do it through 5G and through other methods. So there's going to be a large part of the strategy detailing on that. But really, as I've just said, the growth for the economy out of this and the jobs and skills that can be increased through the digital rollout, I think is crucial to me. We've got up to 123 million off the government for the rollout of the gigabit. We've also got 4 million, which is left over from the gain share from the rollout of superfast, which will be used to target that percentage that are hard to reach to get connected, mainly in the rural area, but necessarily always in the rural area. And that is through, as I say, getting them connected if it's through mobile or other methods that are coming along. We will try to do that. We have a rural county. We have areas that are hard to reach and they need to have share in that connectivity like we all do going forward. So I'm really pleased about this. I think it's the start of the journey, you know, the second part of the journey on this. And I think, as I've heard from members, there's a lot of enthusiasm for this. And I take the point of councillor Graetrix about leaving people behind. And of course, digital inclusivity is an important issue. But of course, some people will never want to connect to them because they don't feel that, you know, that the technology will support them. As we saw a member next to me here whose laptop broke just as he was about to speak. Sometimes he's got to write notes on paper as well and do the old fashioned. So not everybody wants to jump into the digital world. But I think this is a great move forward and it's the county leading this, not delivering it on the ground like we did with the superfast. We're going to deliver it with private sector partners, which is really a crucial change from the superfast. The money's there from the government, the gain share is there as well from the successful rollout of superfast. So I'm really optimistic that we can achieve this. And thank you for member support.
Newcastle Enterprise Centre Extension Scheme. Councillor Simon Tagg, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to speak on this. I think this is a great development to bring more enterprise units to Newcastle. I think what we're benefiting here from the levelling up funding, aren't we, which the government have put in? And levelling up is all about creating opportunities. It's about making things happen that wouldn't happen without that money. And I think this is a start of that. And the Borough Council is also putting in a levelling up fund bid for some bigger units, for the businesses that start out in these enterprise units to move on and stay in the borough. One of the problems we do have is that when businesses start at the enterprise centres, which have been very successful over the years, they end up moving out to grow. So we want to increase that in another bid we're making. And also through the Shared Prosperity Fund, there are a number of schemes that are coming forward in that to help jobs and skills. Because I think if we're going, local government will be the levelling up agent. Really, the government will give us the money and we will do the levelling up. And through Newcastle, what we want is better jobs and skills staying in the borough through businesses expanding and these enterprise parks or these enterprise centres or the extension to the one we have in Nutton are the start of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mike Sutherland, please.
Thank you, Chair. And can I congratulate my colleagues at Newcastle? I hope you have every success with this extension that we have had in Canwick Chase. About 18 months ago, we had a grant that we invested and developed the site that we have. It's now full and the demand is still outstripping our availability. And certainly, within our local plan, we're now focused on looking at making some provision or gaining some provision that we can actually look to build maybe another enterprise centre. But definitely, the demand is there. And what we mustn't forget, small business... And what we mustn't forget, small business, given a little support and time, and that's what enterprise centres do, they give them time to flower, grow and expand. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. For the first time, councillor Derek Cookfield.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I'm glad you said the first time because I wanted to speak on the next one as well. Can I just say first of all, right, that this is a godsend because we've got an area which is really deprived, right? And to create jobs in that area for those people, right, would be fantastic, right? And I think they're going the right road and on the levelling up, right? And the government funding and the council staff at Newcastle are putting funding in, right, to make this a better area. I mean, it's been neglected for years and nobody knows better than me because I was a councillor for that area at one point, right? And at the end of the day, right, it seems as though we'd done nothing but fall out, right, to try to get something for the area. It always seemed to go down the south, down the south of the county. And the Labour Party at the time, right, they used to look at it, just chuck them a few little bits under the table, right, and that'll keep them happy, right? We'll spend all the money down south, right, but we'll leave them areas up there deprived. And you had the places like Cheltenham, Newcastle, Silverdale, right, and Nunn, right? And because of that, at this moment in time now, right, that they're spending some money. And people out there, and I've got to say, they don't believe it. They can't believe, right, that it's Conservative Party, right, that they're doing it, right? Because they've always voted Labour all their lives. And they say, what's happening? The summit funnigin' on? The Conservatives spending money in a Labour area? We can't believe it. And I think that's one of the reasons that people are starting to realise, right, that the Conservatives aren't just for the south of the county but for the north as well. And I think that goes a good way. And I'm going to leave it at that, Mr Chairman. And can I just say, congratulations to everybody, right, that's been involved with it. Right, I had a little input, right? And so was Stephen Sweeney, right, was involved in it, New Castle Council and Simon Tag and all the others. And I think at the end of the day, these are the things that we should publicise. We should let people know, right, that we are doing all this, that we want to benefit the area, we want to get people out of the area into jobs, right? And so they can have what you call a decent living. And when you look at the cost of living at this moment in time, it's a godsend, isn't it? Because people could have a job, right, and be able to afford to go to the shop, to the supermarket and buy the food as well as pay the gas and the electric. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman.
As always, thank you. Councillor Philip White, please.
I was hoping you wouldn't call me next. It's so hard to speak just after Derek. But I'll do my best. This is brilliant news. It's, as Derek said, it's exactly the sort of thing that we need in this part of Newcastle. It's an area where there are businesses that want to grow, they need premises, and they can't find them at the moment because there is a problem in market supply with the small and step-up spaces. And in this particular enterprise centre, there needs workshop space, so that's what we're creating there. It's a mix of funding through the town deal money that we've had from government into the Newcastle Town Deal. I'm not sure if it's declarable interest or not, but I am a member of the Town Deal Board, so I'll just mention that at this point. But then matched with funding through the County Council as well, backed by a business plan that demonstrates the need for this provision and also demonstrates how the taxpayer will get its money back from the income that will generate from the site whilst people get on with making their businesses grow and employing people. And we are doing the same across the whole of the county. So we expanded Silverdale up the road recently using shipping containers for very flexible workshop space at a very low cost. They're brilliant, go and visit it, you'll love it. Cannock, as Mike Sutherland mentioned, and I hope to crowbar it in somewhere. Also, this week, I was delighted to open our Shire Hall Business Innovation Centre just over there, where the need is for flexible office space. So addressing some of the changes in working patterns in offices where people don't necessarily want to be there all week, but they do want to be able to come in for some of the week, particularly to collaborate and meet other people. I'm delighted that here in Stafford, we've been able to provide that in the magnificent Shire Hall building, back open and in a productive use. And another great example of councils doing the things that councils should do to help other people to get on with their lives and to be productive and to make their lives better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mobilisation of Staffordshire Household Waste Recycling Centres. Simon Tag, please. Councillor Derek Cookfield again then, please.
You'll be go first. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Can I just say first of all, right, that I think the Cabinet are getting it right. And it isn't very often, right, I praise a lot of people, but it seems as though it's going to be one of them days. Can I just say first of all, right, I'm going to bring into this is a landfill site in Silverdale, as you all know. I know you're probably fed up already, but, right, we've moved on halb a lot. Can I just say that Simon Tag and myself, we put some proposals forward to the Environmental Agency, right? And they've accepted the proposals, they've implemented the proposals, right? And where it was, you've got 400 people a day complaining, right, it's gone down now to two or three. Fantastic, right? So hopefully, we've resolved the problem, right? So we just keep our fingers crossed that it doesn't raise its head again because we're not just looking at people's health, we're looking at the environment and everything else that goes with it. Can I come back now to the recycling? On the recycling, it seems as though if you've got a problem with rubbish, give Derek a wrench. I've been classed just lately as the rubbish man, right? And I've been dealing with complaints concerning the recycling centre within my area, right? And within the rural area, dare I say. Can I just say that it's been neglected? And what I can understand, talking to different people, the same thing applied all across the county where certain areas have been neglected, right? And the best thing that the Cabinet have done, right, is bring it back in house. So now we've got a really good argument, right, to get things sorted out, right? And I believe, and I'm taking it from my own experience, that the skip site within my area, right, it's going to be sorted out, right? And that's something that's really good, right? That when you know you can come to this council or you can go to council or go to officials, right, knowing, right, that you've got a problem, you can get that problem sorted out, right? And I'm really pleased about that. And can I just say to the Cabinet, and it's going to come back to the Cabinet again, right? I think you're going the right road about this, right? Because by bringing it back in house, it gives us a better argument, right? It makes it more secure, it encourages more people to recycle because if it's run properly and if the people are looked after properly, right, that go there and we've got the right roads and the right sites, then we're on a winner. And I think that's what we've got to look forward to, not just for now, right, but for the future. But the simple reason is recycling is one of the top priorities in the country at this moment in time. Your plastics and everything else, because that's what's causing the big problem within the environment. And if we can get people to take it safely, right, to these skip sites, I think we're on a winner. And that might help, not all the way, but some way to making our environment a lot better than what it is. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Jill Hood, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Perhaps I'll give your telephone number, Mr Hookfield, to my residents instead of mine. We have the most efficient recycling centre, Chairman, in Stone, Stone Urban. Very, very well used, always queues there and it really is welcomed by residents. But I'm having more and more traders get in touch with me now complaining that they're being turned away because there just isn't the capacity to take their waste. So I went along there and I sort of did a little mini survey of my own and had a look at the vans and the trucks that were coming in to dispose of their trade recycling waste. And they were coming from Wolverhampton, Coventry, Birmingham. I couldn't believe the areas that these people were coming to get rid of their recycling. So I came along to the county and I spoke to a very helpful officer who said to me, unfortunately, we don't have border patrol or border control. So it's very disappointing to me that we don't keep our Staffordshire border localised to Stone Urban for our traders and there are a great deal. And I ask if this County Council can help, I would be very grateful and so would my traders. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor Hood. Councillor Simon Tag, please.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the comments, particularly from councillor Hookfield there. I completely hit it on the nail, probably the first time ever in this chamber, hit it on the nail with what we're trying to do with this and thank you for that. And I'll come to the point of what councillor had raised in a minute. But I think this is a great opportunity we've got now, we've got these back in-house and pay tribute to the officers that achieved that on time. And there was obviously the chip arrangements, the transfer of all 14 sites has been a big job. And Mark De Vil, who is the portfolio holder, handled that, did a great job. And I'm now taking this on under the portfolio that I have to move them forward and improve them. And what we're going to do is we're going to have, we've got four guiding principles. One is a service that is safe to use and operate, a service that maximises recycling opportunities, a service that provides best value for the public purse, a service that can match customer demand. So those are the guiding principles as we go forward. And what we're looking at, as it says in the last paragraph there, is that five-year cost of maintenance and improvement plan. And we bring something to Cabinet in the autumn and also scrutiny will have a chance to have a pre-look at that in early autumn, which will be Tina Clement's committee. So I'll be interested to see what members come forward with on that. And also we'll be obviously going out and engaging with the public who use the sites. I mean, coming to what councillor Hood said, that is a big problem we've inherited, isn't it, from the previous contractor? And I think, you know, officers are aware of that and I think through the scrutiny progress process and the Cabinet, we can explore how we deal with that. Obviously, it should be a residents-first service and it should be a residents of Staffordshire's first service. But we do know that businesses do have to and do use them, but we need to manage that and we need to have a process which isn't really clear and in place at the moment. So we'll be working to bring that in and we'll see benefits across the board, but particularly those that do suffer from cross-border incursions, using your word there, councillor Hood, such as near Stoke or on the borders east, west or south. So it's something we can look at and something we can sort out. But we've got to be mindful of possibilities of flytipping if businesses do come from out of the area and then they just try to find a country road to dump it. We don't want that to happen neither because the districts and boroughs have to pick up the bill for that. So we need to work with them to ensure that doesn't happen. But I'm really optimistic about this, it's a good development to bring them in-house. And looking at sites, councillor Hookfield, I think the Newcastle one isn't ideal part of this five-year plan. You're aware already that some plans have been forward for the leasing site to improve entrances and exits and the way that site runs because it hasn't been and isn't the best way to run a household waste recycling site. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Lamore, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you to councillor Hood for raising that point. We are working on new policy and new policy is emerging to deal with the cross-border incursions which will be going to councillor Clement's scrutiny committee in the autumn. I think there'll be proposals in there that you'll see which will start to address that problem. But as councillor Tag has highlighted, I'd ask the scrutiny to be careful of the unintended consequences of implementing a new policy because as councillor Tag correctly highlights, flytipping is that potential unintended consequences. But ladies and gentlemen, mark this day. Mark this day well. It is the 21st of July 2022 and Derek Hookfield praised us not once but twice. Mark this day.
Thank you, Mr Bradbury. Make sure it's in the minutes. Staffordshire Sustainability Board Vision and Council Commitments. Councillor Connor Wallman, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. This is a subject very, very close to my heart, as I know most members will know. And I really welcome the fact that we have a sustainability board put together for the first time. It's no mean feat to get all district councils and the county council together to work in harmony to try and improve the sustainability across the whole county. So I pay tribute to the Cabinet members that have been able to put that together. As you would expect, clearly I've been through the vision and commitments document that was presented to Cabinet on the 15th of June and I think there are a couple of issues that I think need to be borne out. The first is the fact that it doesn't have any external organisations as part of that sustainability board, nor the NHS, nor the larger organisations across the county. And my question is, although we can include those in discussions, wouldn't it be better to have a representative, for example, from the NHS or from the business community so that we can hear a much wider discussion at that board? And I think that would be helpful and I'd welcome if the Cabinet member could take that comment on board. The second is around the council commitments in the vision paper. And if I read some of these out, you'll hear that there's some baseline and reporting to do about carbon emissions, that's something this council has already done and I think most councils have already done across the country. Some carbon ambassadors, some green travel planning, some communications, some stuff around actual specific things that are going on within this local authority, not the wider significant concerns around energy, around sustainable transport, around planning, which actually are those issues which if both councils, if both district councils and the county council could deliver, actually we could make some serious progress. So my question for the Cabinet member is when are we going to review this vision and commitment document to include some of those more significant issues which I think both types of council could deal with in a really appropriate way at that board level? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor David Smith, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't wish to be flippant, but I would like to suggest that this committee, before it starts, they all stand up, hold hands and sing Somewhere Over the Rainbow. Because I think that what's been proposed is excellent, I don't have any issue with that. But there is a vision that's got to go further. We have problems that we don't have answers to and we need to be looking at exploring that long-distance situation. What's going to happen after I'm long since gone and not making comments in this council chamber? But we need to be having a vision for how we are going to be able to provide services to our communities that will be self-sustained, that will not be consuming energy from oil or whatever else. We have opportunities to go ahead. Many of those are beyond the current thinking of what we need to do. But we need to have that long, long, long distance future visioning. And I hope that either this council gets together to look at what they want to do or this panel does it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Simon White, please. Sorry, Simon Tag, please.
Thank you, madam. Last one from me in an row of items here. Really pleased that this is now set up. I think we've got to start somewhere and we've started now by getting all the districts around the table, setting out a base pledge that we can all work to and we can monitor ourselves against. As councillor Wallman read out some of them, there's a whole list of them in the Cabinet report, which you've already started to work on, such as the training, the climate training as well, which has already been rolled out in the County Council and across some of the districts. I think external partners is a key point which Connor Wallman raises and I think particularly the NHS, as has been mentioned, but also some other universities, also businesses. And I think really at the moment, we're keeping to local government while we build it and we get used to working together. We've got an officer group that sits behind the board, which does the business and does the doing. And ultimately, we report into the Leaders' Board, which is chaired by the County Council leader and also all the district leaders are on there. So there's a structure which we're working within, but it certainly needs to be bigger than local government because local government just accounts for 2% of carbon emissions across the country. The things that we do, whether it's highway stuff or whether it's the districts collecting... The things that we do, whether it's highway stuff or whether it's the districts collecting bins, whether it's all the other stuff, the recycling we do creates a carbon emission as well. Whereas the other 98% is everything else that happens in the county as well. So we need to work across sector really. And interestingly, there is some moves towards a climate commission for Staffordshire, which I've been involved in as portfolio holder here, I've been observing and putting into. It's in very early stages, but that would be a cross-sector agreement, which I think the sustainability board would feed into as a local government voice, as a commissioner around the table as well. So I think there's many structures we could put in place, but also there needs to be structures that actually deliver something. And what we're actually set up here through the Staffordshire Sustainability Board, I believe can deliver for local government to get us all on the same starting point, which we do do with the base pledge, and get us moving forward. And for us, it's to get to carbon zero by 2050, net carbon zero by 2050. But along the way, five-year plans to help us to achieve that through all the things we've discussed previously at council about the nature recovery, about tree planting, about moving away from fossil fuels for energy and reducing that carbon where we can. So really pleased with this. A long way to go, but we've made a start. Thank you.
Staffordshire Leaders' Board. Councillor Alan White, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm delighted to have the first public meeting of the Staffordshire Leaders' Board. We were able to capitalise upon the great work that we did as the districts, boroughs and the county council during the course of the pandemic. For those that weren't convinced that two-tier working was great for our residents, the pandemic clearly proved that that was the case. Two-thirds of us, or three-quarters, Chief Executive, I'm not quite sure which one it is, three-quarters of us in this room are double-hatters. We know what it's like to be a district councillor and we know what it's like to be a county councillor. That gives a great deal of strength and depth in this chamber to the local government family for the delivery of good quality services to our residents. When residents get in touch with the council, they just get in touch with the council. They don't care whether it's the county, the district or the borough. They've just got a problem and they want it solved. And the strength of our chamber these days is that we have so many people who are able to just get on and solve that problem at a single stroke. Bringing together the two tiers of local governments across Staffordshire brings real strength. And there are things that we can do together that we don't need to ask government for further devolution for, that we don't need to get our knickers in a twist, spending ages and ages lobbying for stuff that government may or may not give us. There's powers we have already and we need to make use of them better. And that is what we are doing. And I'm delighted, Mr Chairman, that the leaders' board is up and running. And I can see there's a whole work programme ahead of us that we will be delivering for the residents of Staffordshire.
Councillor Tom Loughborough, please.
I'd just like to do something quite rare for local politics. I'd like to praise Staffordshire because this is the opposite of chaotic. Staffordshire has a history of working together where it comes to refugees from Afghanistan to Ukraine to household support. And councillor White is right. Most residents, I've learnt from the very first day, don't recognise it as county council. They will email me on district. Indeed, they email me at town council matters because we to them are councillors and it is pragmatic and it is right that something like this happens. And I also was encouraged by the fact that councillor White speaks about a two-tier authority. The idea, it's very difficult in Burtonwood to talk about telling them what to do because in Burtonwood they like a very independent. I've learnt that. I've been from my area quite a lot. And the idea of imposing one single authority upon them is something that I couldn't consider. And I also think that whilst central government for these county deals often does mayoral deals, like in the West Midlands, it would not suit Staffordshire because we have diverse areas of Newcastle, Stoke, which of course is not part of our geographical area. And of course, we have to always, and we've already proven we have a partnership with. And we have, we border Manchester and in my division we border quite close to Walsall. So we have to be quite pragmatic in how we explore county deals. And we have a good history in Staffordshire of working together. And I'm glad that we look into working together closely. And I think it's something that should be reflected across the country. Councils should work together when necessary. And as the only municipal councillor who has never been a district councillor, it's quite unique for me to say this. It's good to see experience from across the council. Because as a young person in particular, my generation is not as engaged in politics as they should be. And I hope that we together can encourage people to get involved in democracy because local democracy at this level is important. And it's very, very good that we are working together as a county because the only way we'll get a sustainable deal to level up the entire county is by working for all of us rather than squabbling together as it seems to be happening at the national level. We don't seem to be doing that at Staffordshire. Most of us, regardless of our politics, work together. Indeed, I have a Labour town council which I have to work together with. But that's politics. And the Staffordshire Leaders' Board is a good example of the pragmatics of whatever area we are. I watched it and I was quite impressed, I would like to say. And I hope that we see more of that thing in the future because at the end of the day, we're elected to serve the residents of our areas regardless, for the entire county of Staffordshire. And that's something we should always bear in mind.
Thank you. Ofsted-focused inspection. Councillor Mark Sutton, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. 26th and 27th of May, we had a focused Ofsted visit to look at our arrangements for children, subject of children in need and our child protection planning. The findings by Ofsted were generally very positive. They said that during Covid, the local authority and partners have continued to support and manage risk effectively for the most vulnerable children. Children are seen regularly by social workers who understand their needs. Social workers have a clear understanding of children's experiences. The majority of assessments are detailed with clear evaluations. The majority of children and families receive services that are delivered at the right area. There are, however, some areas that we need to work on. They are around timeliness of record-keeping, how we audit assessments and how we use the data that we obtain. And I have already discussed with the chairman of safeguarding, overview and scrutiny whether that committee would like to have a look at how we progress and deal with those matters. But I think more importantly, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank all our staff that have been involved in that Ofsted inspection. But in particular, pay tribute to all our staff who are involved on a daily basis in safeguarding and improving the futures of children within this county. They make really difficult, critical decisions in a calm and calculated way every single day that they are at work that impact on people's lives. And we must be very grateful that there are people who are willing to do that. And I hope I speak for everyone in this chamber in saying a big thank you to them.
Holiday Activities and Food Programme. Councillor Jill Limpertasi, please.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, can I ask please, is my understanding correct that partly thanks to the cost of living crisis, the numbers of children in particular who need this type of programme is actually increasing, but the funding itself has not? In fact, in some areas, I understand that funding is decreasing. So is the funding meeting and keeping up with the needs? And secondly, can I ask, I hear a lot about support for primary age children, but there are also high school children who need that sort of support as well. Could I ask where that support is, the type of support, Chair? Thank you.
Councillor Jill Hood, please.
Thank you, Chairman. We're about to go into the six weeks holiday. And this activity that we're putting forward through the county council, I promoted myself. It's an excellent scheme and will benefit a lot of children throughout Staffordshire. My deep concern is for those parents who don't quite fit the criteria of they're earning just that little bit too much to be on benefits. And the cost of living is really, really hitting these parents. I want to tell you about a resident of mine who chooses to work, who would be better off on benefits. She works full-time and she has a seven-year-old son. Throughout school time, it's excellent because he gets free school meals. She's struggling to feed her child. But what concerns me the most is that throughout the six weeks, that child has now got used to his mother working at home on her laptop all day and quite often into the very late night, many, many hours because it's required of her. That child has to play quietly. He does have a garden, but because he can't go out, he has to play on his own. She's struggling to feed him. But what's worrying is how much fresh air is that child going to have during the six weeks holiday? How many activities will he be able to do? Probably next to nothing. She's not on her own. Throughout Staffordshire, there are many, many parents like this. Some with two parents within the household, some single parents. And this scheme is not for those children. And I think it's a crying shame. I know it's money. I know we can't accommodate every child on these play schemes, but they are amazing. I go along to a couple that are in my division and to see the children all playing together, learning to socialise again after we've been shut down for almost two years where those children don't see anyone else, is just amazing. Their mental health is improving. It's absolutely great. But please bear in mind, for a parent to put their child onto some of these schemes, there's in our area, there's B Active, Trentham Doing A Scheme. It's an average of £25 a day. These parents cannot afford to send their children to these schemes. And as I've already said, I'm deeply, deeply concerned. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Mark Sutton, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Deal with some of the comments initially. The Holiday Activities and Fund Programme is available for all children entitled to free school meals, irrespective of age. So that goes up to the statutory school age of 16. This is probably the fourth or fifth tranche of funding that we have received since October 2020, when the local authority here in Staffordshire, that we decided that we would use it to fund free school meal vouchers. We were one of the first authorities to say that we were going to do that and we have continued to do that under that scheme. The Holiday Activities and Fund Programme itself has now run since the summer of last year. I myself have visited a number of the programmes last summer and I've pencilled in a number this year. So I've seen at first hand how this does improve the lives of young people. They are attending these activities. They are getting a meal involved in that. If there is an issue with it, which I highlighted last year and it is difficult to do anything about, is the amount of families who do sign up for it, agree to come and then do not turn up. And a couple of schemes I went to where this happened, it tended to coincide with nice sunny days where families decided they would go out for the day. So it is really difficult to do anything about that lack of attendance. I do take up very much the point that councillor Hood has made around those families that don't quite meet the criteria for this scheme and are just above that, but still have, you know, challenges. And I will and I have spoken to officers about that, how we can develop the scheme in future. We have the funding for three years, but we are governed by strict guidelines that are set. And it is around children entitled to free school meals. But there might be other things that we are able to look and do, but I can't clearly make any promises. But what I would say is that families of children that are young, obviously under five, do have the opportunity to 15 and 30 hours free childcare if they work. And I appreciate that doesn't help if your children are now at school age. So there are challenges out there, but we have been able to offer 70,000 places across the county and it's ever-expanding. This year's scheme is offering more, more varied activities, more groups are coming on board. And many of the organisations that offer the activities have just extended what they've been doing anyway and clearly offering the free school meal places free. But instead of just a minimum of four hours, they've been allowing those children to come for the whole of the day and that is at those providers' expense. In Staffordshire, we've not done anything like this before. It's been hard work. So I'd like to pay credit to the officer team who are involved in this, the same team that have been involved in the Household Support Fund, that's Natasha Moody and her team. And they've also had other things added to their workload that they have managed to do and sort in a really, really professional way. Take on board the comments and ensure that we give that some due consideration as we move forward to future schemes in the future. And if you do, if members do know of schemes that operate in their area, you know, please take the opportunity, if you can, to go and take a little look. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Investment in Staffordshire roads. And over this may be quite a longer period, so let's have little repetition if we can help it, so to give more people the opportunity to speak. Councillor Jonathan Price.
Apologies, Leader. Yes. I'm the Cabinet member, obviously, for education, but I also have my own division, which is Stafford North. And we've had extreme difficulties over the past two to three years with continual night closures on the M6. This has caused particular hardship for the residents on the Stone Road and the A34 within the Stafford North Division, who've had trucks rumbling past the houses all through the evening. This compounded, of course, through Covid, so that people are having to stay at home during that period for many, many days. And the mental health on some of these residents as well has been very difficult to manage. I'd like to say that although the road itself on the A34 has structurally failed and is in extremely poor condition, throughout the smart motorway closures, the county council highways team have been nothing but professional and extremely helpful with making sure that signage was in place throughout this period. Any potholes that appeared that were causing any disturbance were dealt with as quickly as possible and have basically tried to manage the situation to the best of their ability. The road has now come to the point where it has completely failed and is in extremely poor state. And I'm very pleased to see that within this year's capital structural maintenance programme, that road has now been highlighted and the funds have been allocated to get that road replaced. And I would like to thank the officers for all the hard work through the pandemic and through the motorway closures for supporting my residents in a very difficult time and for the Cabinet member as well for the support that he gave me during that period. And hopefully, the project starts next year, January, February time. And although there will be some significant disruption to residents, they can take satisfaction in knowing that eventually this road will be replaced and it will no longer look like craters on the moon. And I think somebody else had referenced that in something I'd read recently as well, but no. And thank you all.
Councillor Jill Hood, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I would just like to congratulate the highway team on the admirable job that they have done on the A34 in Stone. The only thing I will criticise is that I think possibly whoever puts up the digital explanations about road closure times has probably got some kind of mischievous spirit amongst them. As I had more calls about, please can you explain exactly what it means? I'm also delighted that Walton Roundabout has been earmarked to be repaired, which my residents have been long awaiting. And I will say that we thought we would have major upheaval. All of us who live on the A34, getting in and out of our houses, there was no disruption at all. So congratulations, councillor. So congratulations, councillor Williams. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Graham Hutton, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd congratulate particularly the Cabinet Member responsible for highways for the recent reports we're getting on grass cutting in the urban areas. It's a blight on urban areas when you see grass this high along roads. It does no good. I get a lot of complaints about how this brings an area down. And I'm delighted that highways are getting to grip with this. It's been an appalling problem and I commend you for starting, and this is only the start. We do expect next year not to have this horrible mess. Thank you very much.
For the third time, Commissioner Derek Huckfield.
Oh, dear. I hope you make a big issue out of this, Mr. Chairman. My first question I'd like to ask, can we put such a lot of a tarmac down that doesn't melt? When I look at the television, it looks as though all the roads are all melting. So we've not only got a problem with potholes, not on the roads but on the pavements, but we've got a problem where they're being treated as though they're skating rinks, right? Because it isn't ice, it's the sun that's doing it, right? But in saying that, right, I mean, I've got to go with my colleague that's sitting behind me there on the grass cutting. I think, I don't think there's a councillor in here that hasn't had a problem with the grass cutting somewhere along the line, right? And people seem to be more interested in the grass cutting than what they are really sometimes in the roads and the pavements. I think as what the problems are, right, and I get them on a day-to-day basis. If you've got a tree, right, and the leaves on the tree, right, belong to Staffordshire County Council. If they fall off on the floor, right, and this is what I'm told, they belong to the Borough Council, which is Newcastle. So the problem is, right, when we've got the grass cutting, the grass cutting is the problem with the County Council. When they cut it, they don't collect it in boxes like they used to do years ago. Now it goes all over the pavements and all over the roads. So when it rains, right, all that that goes into the gutters, right, right, all that is washed down into the grids. So that creates a major problem because to try to get a grid unblocked, we're asking for a miracle. Is there any way round where they can go back to what it used to be and have a box on the cutters and collect the grass up? Because if you did that, that could go into recycling, the composting. Now, I can't understand why we can't do that as what it is, is a box on. So I'm going to ask the Cabinet Member if there's any way, never mind I, if there's any way, he can have a look at that to see if he can solve this problem. So because it's already been stated, he could go on for years and years, the same argument. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Mrs. Cath Perry, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Just like to rise to say thank you to the Cabinet Member and to the officers for the investment they're making in the capital programmes in my division. Thank you. It's been a long time coming. I'm sure the residents appreciate it. It's never enough, but I'm sure the residents of Broad Lane will be very happy to see some works. And I can see the chief executive shaking his head because I'm sure he's had far more messages and emails about it as I have. So thank you very much indeed to the Cabinet Member and to the officers for the investment in my division. Thank you.
While you're on your feet, so while you're talking, I suppose I should thank the Cabinet Member for my division as well, as if there's more being spent in my division than the rest of Canwick Chase put together. It's mentioned to me almost every day by the other councillors. Commissioner Caroline Trowbridge, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish I was so lucky. I just wanted to ask the Cabinet Member, while he's doing the north end of town because of the lorries that have come through for years now with the M6 closures, could he also do the Wolverhampton Road that has had equally the same amount of traffic on, please?
Commissioner Simon Tag, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to echo what all the members from Newcastle have said about the poor quality of the grass cutting. I really welcome this investment we're putting in, this £15 million. And of course, as councillor Ian Parry mentioned earlier, the extra million also into getting the job right as well as transforming the way we work as well. It's crucially important. But we had a very, very poor quality of grass cutting really this spring. It's on the back of really two years of not really very good quality grass cutting. We had a question to the Borough Council meeting a couple of weeks ago from a member from one of our wards, councillor Andrew Parker, where he said the frequency and quality of the cuts this year has been abysmal. And I think that just summed it up, what we've had to put up with really in Newcastle. I know other districts have had issues as well. And I'd just like to thank the portfolio holder for putting up with all my whinging about it and also all the members from Newcastle and actually getting something done, getting it targeted. And now they've caught up with the cuts and they've gone along with our third cut this year. Again, weather has intruded a lot with the dry spell has not led to a very good cut and the quality issues as well, but just that frequency of cuts have just gone down the plug hole basically. And I think, you know, working with the contractor and if necessary, if the contractor doesn't come up to scratch the rest of this year, I hope the portfolio would consider changing that contractor. And I think also, I will go on record here as saying, I think, you know, it needs changes within this council, the way that we monitor these contracts and ensure that these jobs are done, that taxpayers' money's being spent on, on a subcontractor of a subcontractor. I think that didn't work and I know that I've whinged enough to the portfolio holder about it, to Cabinet and to officers, and hopefully that's taken on board and we can improve that. But this investment, which we're talking about under 13, is really important to help us to change that and transform our highways, not only on potholes, but grass cutting, gully emptying and all the other things which we do as a highways authority. Thank you.
I'll take councillor Philip Atkins, then I'll refer to the Cabinet Member afterwards.
I was just sitting listening about all this grass mowing. You know, as a farmer, all we get told about is carbon capture. You know, we've just had the hottest days ever in this country and climate change and listening about CO2, but the grass on the side of the road does capture carbon. So sometimes we've just got to get used to the changes in the way that we live. But there is another thing about fire hazard as well. And I'm sure that the portfolio holder in his previous role would understand the dangers of having dry grass in hedges and people casually throwing cigarette butts out of the window or glass bottles or whatever. And that's what's gone wrong down in South London. So there's a real issue about that. And there's also, everybody's talking about it, but in my division, there's a big factory that makes the machine that mends potholes. And I think the techniques of mending potholes in different parts of the county, either in urban, rural or whatever the situation may be, and we've got to start looking at new technology all the time because the cost of repairing our roads will go on and on up. £15 million is gratefully received, but I bet the total bill to repair all the roads is in excess of £100 million.
Thank you. Commissioner David Williams, please.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for the compliments. That happens to highways very often and I do actually really appreciate it, but we are striving to make sure that what we do as a highways authority is the best that we can do. And I also want to thank personally councillor Ian Parry and his team for enabling me to get £15.5 million to invest. It's a very prudent amount. It's not the amount that we as a cabinet wanted to do, but it's the right amount and it's as much as we could afford so that we are not overdoing things and putting the council into any sort of danger. And I have to say thank you to Ian for that. Unfortunately, councillor Huckfield, I have to say you know, all road surfaces get melted before they're put on, so they will melt. However, I have to say that apart from two roads that I know about, we actually didn't have to start going around gritting this year due to the successive heat. The roads held up and the new locked-in style of surface dressing that we've used not only has looked fantastic and will last a lot longer, but has not melted and really has accentuated the areas. I understand his concerns about the leaves. Actually, they belong to Mother Nature all the way. We don't own them at any time. And the fact about collecting them costs a lot more money. If we want to do that, then please councillor Huckfield, find me a lot more money and I'll more than happily collect them and dispose of them. And that's where there are cost implications that we have to look at. What we're trying to do with the grass cutting, and I understand, never whingeing councillor Tag, always constructively criticising, that we are looking at the ways that we've managed our grass cutting and we're looking at a different way of doing that next year. So for members of information, every single grass cutting authority that we are dealing with, I am bringing in in September. I want to deal with it exactly how we're looking at it for next year. That will probably look at when we start the cuts, what type of cuts in what area. There are different machines and different technologies. And coming on to councillor Atkins, absolutely, we are looking at innovation and technology. We've trialled different, maybe different pieces of equipment. We're going to be trialling a lot more to pick different pieces of equipment. And also, when it comes to carbon capture, we're now going to be trialling a new style of doing roads that is about one-third the amount of carbon dioxide that is put into the environment. We are not sitting still. The £15.5 million and the transformation programme is doing just that. We are transforming the way that we deliver highways for Staffordshire. That hopefully will mean that despite government cuts on the funding that we get, despite the inflationary pressures that we are under at this moment in time, we will deliver better services, more in the realms where we as members want it. You will find you will be inundated with my communications and updates so that you will know what's going on, you'll know before and after, and you'll be invited with my offices to go and see that. So you can make sure, you can put it out to your constituents because that's what you get elected for. So overall, first of all, I've got to thank Daryl Ayers and his entire team because they are really working overtime on this. We are actually delivering what we said we wanted to despite the pressures. And I have to say that I've got the backing of all Cabinet for that, so I thank them as well. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Commissioner Alomoy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you to councillor Williams for all the hard work he's doing. For anybody standing close to him, you'll notice he's wearing a new aftershave this morning called Hot Bitumen. And I certainly hope it catches on because it's right for the weather, councillor Williams. Councillor Philip Atkins pointed out the work of JCB and a new machine called Pothole Pro. Councillor Atkins, they're in your division. Rest assured that we're taking a very good look at that and we're keen to work with JCB as a strategic partner, not just on our highways, but also as a major employer and trainer of many young people across the county of Staffordshire. We do get slightly hung up with this £15.5 million, don't we? Talk about it all the time, this additional £15.5 here, additional £15.5 there, and people are getting really worked up about it. But let's just remind ourselves about how much we are spending on the highways each year. And as at quarter one with additions, I'm reliably informed by our county treasurer that it is £67 million we're intending to put into the highways this year. That includes the £15.5 million of additional funding we're putting in. But it is not just £15.5 million, ladies and gentlemen, it is £67 million as at quarter one. We're determined to get on top of the roads. We're not going to solve all the problems, but boy, oh, boy, we're going to give it the old college try.
Thank you. The Commonwealth Games. Commissioner Burrod.
That's good. The Commonwealth Games baton, of course, as you'll know, came through Litchfield yesterday. And I was rather glad to say that, of course, it came out that despite the fact that poor young chap fell in shape, was doing many acrobatic sports on trace water, the baton survived pretty well. The Commonwealth Games is a passion of mine because I was born in the Commonwealth, which of course means that my family are coming over from New Zealand. So you'll have to forgive me if in the rugby sevens I won't be sporting in the United Kingdom. But it's good for our county if something like this is coming. It gives us an opportunity and I understand that transport in Litchfield is going to be quite busy because the Cross City Line, of course, is a connection to Birmingham. But it provides us an opportunity to put places like Tamworth and Cannock on the map. And it's really good that we have something like this coming in the heart of the West Midlands and I think it's something we should champion and I'm very glad to see it. But you will have to forgive me, the only person, of course, that isn't looking forward to this is my mother, who will of course have to referee the New Zealand-England debates that will be taking place, which I'm sure will be quite interesting. And I wish the athletes the best of luck and I hope we see some Staffordshire winners too.
Well, as my family are Irish, I really enjoyed the rugby results over the last three weeks, so that was very good. To Jeremy Oates, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just explained, we welcomed the Queen's baton relay to Tamworth yesterday. And I think it's just an opportunity that actually we remember what that's about, what that stands for. So we talk about the Commonwealth Games and we talk about the excellent sporting festival that it is. But actually, the Queen's baton relay is about the contribution to community that people make. And the reward is they are allowed to carry that baton through the streets of Staffordshire and particularly Tamworth yesterday. And it was fantastic to receive the Queen's baton yesterday evening in Tamworth. It was a nice, cool evening compared with the day before. We're in the Castle Grounds. Those who don't know the Castle Grounds, get to Tamworth, check it out. We had about 6,000, 7,000 people there and it launched not only the start of the Commonwealth Games, it also launched Tamworth Summer Festival. And Tamworth Summer Festival is based on the Commonwealth Games live site. We are the only place in Staffordshire that is hosting a live site. That means the games are streamed to Tamworth live on two huge screens plus the one on the stage. So if you don't want to go to Brum, don't. Stay in Staffordshire and come to Tamworth. If you're in Burton-on-Trent and you want to go to watch the games in Birmingham, stop two stops earlier on the train. Get off and spend the day in Tamworth. The weather's better, the air's better, the company's better. Come to Tamworth. I've got to finish now, haven't I? So no, we've got the live site, which is a massive feather in our cap. It's all about driving tourism. We've built on to the back of that a series of events. We've got music events, we've got the Philharmonic Orchestra this week, we've got Mel C coming in a few weeks' time, and we've even got an 80s night with Pat Sharp. So, you know, along with those events, we've got a number of free events, sporting and music events in the town centre. Tamworth's legacy from the Commonwealth Games is not just going to be sporting and inspiration, it's going to be about Staffordshire's tourism offer and investment in the local economy. So I'm really chuffed that we've achieved what we have done in Tamworth and I look forward to seeing each and every one of you in Tamworth in the next three weeks. And if you do come, just drop me a line and I was going to say I'll buy you a coffee, but I'll say hello, you know. But no, it's a fantastic privilege and I think it puts not only Tamworth, but Staffordshire on the map, just outside Birmingham, a lot better to go to, less hassle, less traffic, less stress. Come to Tamworth and watch the games. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
As a leader of Tamworth, I think you've done very, very well in selling your borough. Well done. I've got seven speakers waiting now, so I'll take those seven and at the end of that I will take the Cabinet Member. Commissioner John McMonk, please.
Thank you, Chair. You're also most welcome to come to Cannock Chase for the mountain biking. We're proud and delighted to be able to welcome the athletes and the visitors in about fortnights time for the mountain biking event. Cannock Chase is a huge, huge asset to us and we're very proud to be able to share it with those who come. And we are determined to get the legacy out of the Commonwealth Games. And legacies are very difficult. We've seen that before, where it's a real challenge for the legacy to remain. But it's not lost on us, the irony that there's such preventable disease burden in Cannock Chase juxtaposed to such a beautiful asset that could make such a difference. And I think the leaders board should help us, not just in Cannock, but in Tamworth and the whole of the county, for the legacy to remain and make a real difference in people's lives. I want to pay tribute to the three baton bearers that will run the baton through Cannock Chase because they've been elected by our local community and they really do deliver for us in a way that is just so commendable. The first is a gentleman called Craig Corrigan. He's a volunteer football coach and official. He's spent years encouraging young women into the game. He started an organisation called the Brearton Mum Social Football Team. It now boasts eight schoolgirl teams from that start. It now boasts eight schoolgirl teams from that start. And that's something to be really proud about and something that is well deserved. The second is a Sean Middleton, who's a volunteer supporting Hensford Park and the wider community and chairman of Hensford and Partnership and the Hensford Lines. And last, but certainly not least, is district councillor Lisa Wilson. Lisa is a landlady. She runs a pub in her district, which is Heath, Hayes and Wimbledon. And despite the challenge of keeping the pub viable during lockdown, she produced hundreds of meals for those who were challenged by the lockdown. And since the lockdown, she started the first community table in the area and that is really doing very, very well indeed. She's a huge community asset and we're very proud to be able to welcome her onto the baton relay. So this is a great thing for Cannock Chase, it's a great thing for all of us in Staffordshire. And let's get that legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Caroline Trobries, please.
How do I follow those two, Mr Chairman? Well, the baton came to Stafford on the hottest day of the year. So you can imagine a lot of our events for the children had to be postponed sadly. But it still had a wonderful arrival to Stafford Castle. We had twelve volunteers from the community taking it from Stafford into Victoria Park and on to Stone where it went down the canal on the Stafford and Stone Canal, through the Stafford and Stone Canal Club. It was absolutely brilliant to watch this coming through. Exactly as was said across there earlier, Ron, the honour of having it come through and on its last legs into the Commonwealth Games, which starts on Thursday, I do believe. So just a week today. Stafford was still, had hundreds and thousands of people coming out on that burning hot day, obviously with plenty of water. But I just wanted to thank all the volunteers, not only the ones who carried it, but the ones who had their names put forward and didn't. We have such wonderful volunteers in Stafford, equally so in Cannock. And some of these volunteers have been volunteers for sixty-six years, the one gentleman. I mean, how can you be a volunteer for sixty-six years? He's just wonderful. So I just wanted to pay tribute to them all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Richard Cox, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm delighted to have the invite from councillor Oates. I wish it'd come earlier because I've forked out some money to go to Perry Bar, Alexander Stadium, so I wish I'd known earlier. But he's right about community and I think it's important that the baton came through Litchfield District yesterday at the Arboretum, Litchfield Cathedral and Beacon Park and Chase Water. And it was about community yesterday. It was great to see people flag waving, et cetera. Where they got the children from, I don't know, but it was fantastic to see so many children out and about and the whole thing. So it really does add value and it is, as Johnny says, it is about the legacy. We must capture it because, you know, these events don't come around that very often and it's making sure that we're here. But thanks for the invite, Jeremy. I'll probably take you on one or two of them. But on the seventh of August, I'll be in the stadium for the four-by-four relays. So I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Colin Greatrix, please.
Chairman, I'll try and keep it brief because other people from Litchfield District Council have already spoken. We had the day yesterday around the districts and, as has been mentioned, it was National Memorial Arboretum, followed by the cathedral where I was, followed by Beacon Park and then it went to Burnwood and Chase Water. So we had a few different points on the way to Tamworth. But I think the consistency that I saw was the faces of joy and it echoed the feeling that we had for the Olympics. Everybody wanted to be part of it in some way, whether it was a baton carrier or, you know, community volunteers. And the colours came out. I don't know if you've seen the logo for the Commonwealth Games, but it's multicoloured. And all of the volunteers, there were a hundred and twenty in Litchfield District helped out, one hundred and twenty volunteers, all in the purple tops. The baton carriers with the pink and white outfits with pink trim. And even the police came out on bicycles around the cathedral close, I saw them, not wearing the uniforms, but wearing shorts and wearing the white with the orange trims. So everybody getting involved is a multicoloured event and, as I say, the faces of joy will be the thing that I remember.
Thank you. I was at the N M A yesterday to welcome it as part of the reception team. And the police officers in the yellow, they are national officers who've partied for six weeks, following it all around the country. That has been their role for six weeks. So it's just the diversity of it all as well, the people who are carrying it, the age groups. It really was wonderful. Councillor Stephen Sweeney, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. People might not know this, but I'm actually a season ticket holder at Birmingham City Football Club. And when you go down the M6, you look to your right and you've got the Alexander Stadium. And the Alexander Stadium now is about three times bigger than it was. It's a massive great thing on the right-hand side now. That's me inside. The baton came to Newcastle on Monday. It came to Keel at first and it came down to Blong Village in the town centre, which for people of a certain age will think was Maxim's nightclub in the seventies and eighties, but it's now the Blong Village, huge great thing. And the chief exec there, who's retired, went round the outside of it, then went through all the patients, all the wars and everything. And huge enthusiasm, baking hot day on Monday, as everybody knows, and a real buzz, real buzz about the area. And then they went up to Kidsgrove, went along the canal. For people who don't know Kidsgrove, canal-wise, Kidsgrove is very, very famous in the national sort of canal network, haircuffs or tunnels there. James Brinley is buried in Newchapel Ward. So it went into Kidsgrove and then went up to, into Newchapel actually, and on to the pump track. Now, people want to know what a pump track is, it's actually a BMX track. I don't want it to call a pump track, but it's a BMX track and it's probably as good as there is in an ortho country. Huge buzz, huge buzz about there. And the whole thing is just building momentum up. And the mayor of Kidsgrove was there. Now, that might not be interesting to a lot of people here, but the mayor of Kidsgrove's wife's sitting behind me, which is why I mention it, and he was there. And Jill was there as well. And it just, it brings the whole area together. It brings the nation together, the thing like the Commonwealth Games does. I think it brings the whole Commonwealth together in fact, doesn't it? I think it's a marvellous, marvellous thing and it was a really, really good day on Monday. And I'm sure everybody else who had the baton in their area had the same response. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Mark Stilwell, please.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Sorry, I just went there. I'm just going to talk about the Commonwealth Games. When it was first announced it was coming to Cannock Chase. I have an area that's about five hundred yards or three hundred metres from where the cycle track is and they were up in arms. We cannot cope. So really big apprehension there. What I can say is that over probably eighteen months, we've had the Commonwealth representative come to our local parish, highways and also the forestry commission. What I can say is that we've gone from apprehension, dare I say, to excitement. And there's a buzz about the place now. We've had, we're going to have to have road closures because those of you who know the area, the smallest amount of traffic creates problems. So we've overcome the you can't close our road, why are you closing our road, to understanding and appreciation. And so I'm quite pleased and Johnny's covered the baton relay. Our Commonwealth Games starts this Saturday. It starts at Rusely, follows through to Hensford and finally Cannock. And I'm going to say thank you to the Commonwealth representation, thank you for highways, the signs are up, everyone understands them and there's been open dialogue. And first time I'm ever going to thank the forestry commission. And I'm looking forward to a great games.
Thank you. Councillor Victoria Wilson, please.
Not before time. We've been waiting for quite some time now for this to happen and finally it's upon us and it's really, really exciting, isn't it? And all over the county, we're seeing events unfold as the baton takes us from, right from the roaches down through Ruddyard. Obviously, we've heard about Stafford, Tamworth and so on, right down into South Staffs on Saturday, which will coincide with the unveiling of a monument that's being erected on behalf of our dear departed friend, councillor Brian Edwards, MBE. So that will be a magnificent event down in South Staffordshire. Not a pothole to be seen, by the way, anywhere on the route, so I have absolutely no complaints. Thank you councillor Williams. Yeah, Tamworth, as has already been mentioned, is the lucky and deserving area where we're seeing the live festival, beautiful historic background. Congratulations to Tamworth for that, absolutely fantastic, putting us on the map once more. Obviously, further to this, obviously, we've got the cycling trial, time trial event happening as well. That's going to be showcasing South Staffordshire, Himley, which is a tiny little hamlet in my division, putting us on the map, putting us on the international stage, helping us grow our tourism industry, something that we really need to do more of, something we need to show off about our beautiful county that we have here. So I just wanted to allude to the volunteers that have been mentioned. It's breathtaking to see how many volunteers we have in this county helping with events like these. We had a number of volunteers helping with Ironman and now we've got a huge cohort of volunteers from this county that are going over to Birmingham and helping us around the county as well, including a member of staff who actually works in this building as well. So the volunteers have been absolutely crucial and we are so proud of every single one of them. And finally, I've been asked to ask which event is our leader, which event is our leader, Alan White, participating in this year? Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
I move that the report be received. Is that agreed? Overview and scrutiny and your report. Councillor Greatrix, will you move a consideration report, please?
Thank you, Chairman. As chairman of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Committee, it gives me pleasure to present the annual overview and scrutiny report. And I'll invite other members of scrutiny chairman or vice chairman to comment as they see fit on items that are raised or not raised, as the case may be. The report looks backwards at what we've done in the last twelve months and it also looks forward to look at some of the objectives that we're setting ourselves for the future year. So overview and scrutiny continues to play a vital role in the county council, holding decision makers to account, developing and reviewing policy, as well as considering how the council's delivering on its commitments, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting. So over the last year, because we're a people business, it's very much down to the relationships that we've established. So I think we've gelled well as a committee. We've worked well with the officers that we've had working alongside us. And I'd also like to thank the cabinet members who participated in the process as well. And I think that people process has held us well on that. The other thing is that's worth remarking, looking back at this time last year, is we've returned somewhat to normal. Because last year we were somewhat reliant on Zoom and Teams and whatever else. This time we've had the opportunity to be back in person and I think that's helped in the collaborative nature of how we've addressed our issues as we've had to. The work programmes have been refreshed to ensure that we had the right agenda items at the right time, looking at the best opportunity to examine things. And I'll go through some of the highlights, but what I thought would be useful, just to bring it to members' attention, is pages sixty-five to sixty-eight of the report, which is a good summary, almost like a summary to a page, on what each of the overview and scrutiny committees have concentrated on. And I think you can see there that there's something like sixty to seventy areas of attention. So it's been a full year. So as far as my own committee is concerned, the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Committee, there's been a number of comments on the proposed merger prior to the proposal and the chief coroner and the ministry of justice, the merger of some of that aspect of service. And I think it's timely that we looked at climate change, the annual report and also the draft climate change action plan. Earlier in the agenda, we talked about the sustainability board. I'd like to think some of the suggestions were made in terms of more tangible measurements and planned improvements, incremental improvements to measuring what we're doing on climate change has fed into that. We've also had the benefits of the quarterly integrated performance reports that I've mentioned earlier in the meeting as well. And we also had one call-in during the year on the subject of the Burton Library. As far as the Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee, Jeremy Pert has led that and that's maintained scrutiny on all aspects of everything to do with Covid really, because it's been a recovery year. We've looked at updates on data, information, raising awareness about Covid rates, looking at different variants and vaccination programmes across the county. And again, it's something that's on the agenda later on, but G P access has been a subject that's been scrutinised, looking at measures to improve the situation. I appreciate it's been a troublesome situation for the service altogether because of what's happened in the recent years. But the scrutiny has looked at things like digital appointments and increased use of in-person appointments where appropriate. Tina Clements has led the Prosperous Overview and Scrutiny Committee and there's been a high involvement on H S two and scrutinising the actions to secure the best deal for the county. We know it's happening, but we're looking at mitigation to try and get the best for our connectivity and economic growth. There's been also discussion about the recovery from Covid, things like revitalising town centres and looking at the high streets and also looking at the level of jobs that we've got, high-paid and skilled jobs being important, spin-offs from whatever we've done in the way of recovery. We've also looked at a new system on highways and scrutiny has looked at the ambitions on that new package. So finally, looking at safeguarding, which has been led by Bob Spencer. I think there's been a bit of an untangling of duplication that has taken place in terms of police and crime panels and some of the other panels that existed. So that committee has looked at better coordination of that to avoid that duplication and agreeing that the safeguarding overview and scrutiny committee should be the designated panel that coordinates that. And safeguarding has also looked at mitigation efforts on domestic abuse, given that we've had the years that we have when domestic abuse has potentially been able to grow whilst we've been on lockdown. There's been one particular subject where three of the committees have all been involved. So safeguarding, prosperous and health and care overview and scrutiny committees have all looked at the joint effort on spotlighting the review on sexual harassment in schools. And the findings from this investigation give a current picture of the work to identify and address sexual harassment and abuse within schools, with the report also setting out the review group's conclusions and seven recommendations to support considerable work already in place. I mentioned earlier about the review pages that show quite a lot that's happened. There is also quite significant summary going on in terms of the forward-looking aspects of the work of the four committees and that is on pages sixty to sixty-four. I would put the challenge out to members, if anybody feels that something's not included, then by all means contact the appropriate overview and scrutiny committee chairman or myself.
Thank you. Councillor Bob Spencer, please.
Chair, thank you. I naturally would agree with all the points that have just been made. And I also just wanted to highlight the point that was made right at the very end there, certainly about the joint spotlight review on sexual harassment in schools, a really important issue that came as a result of a report and the very ambitious plan that the council had to make sure that we understood the level of this particular threat and risk within our schools. I just wanted to pay tribute, if I could, to the team that pulled all of that together and just demonstrated how effectively the three panels worked together around that to give an important holistic view of what the problem was. And I think... around that, to give an important holistic view of what the problem was. And I think part of that goes through these reports about, these are not silo issues. You will see reports around things like domestic violence and various other things that are not just an issue for one particular organisation or agency. And it's really encouraging to see how those committees have come together to be able to do that. And I just wanted to pay a particular thanks to all of those members that I knew took part in, in that particular spotlight review, but also some of the others. One of the, and the final thing really that I would just add to what's been said, is about the fact that we are, or my committee is the designated crime and disorder panel, an issue that's very close to my heart of course. And perhaps previously, we've never really been clear about where that sits and what, and what that does. We now have a much greater focus on how we're going to carry out the overview and scrutiny part of that important business. As I know, it affects a lot of areas and a lot of members will have equal concerns about sort of levels in crime. And I just wanted to pay, or just to say thanks to councillor Wilson, in, with her cabinet responsibility around communities, for actually providing a process and a mechanism for that to work. The other reports are in here around domestic violence, I won't go through them all. I'll just finish really by saying that the, one of the last things that we looked at was how we support young carers, those people that care for either siblings or parents, and actually making sure that we are doing everything we possibly can to protect them, their education, their futures and everything else. And that was a really important, they're all important pieces of work. But that has led to members wanting to understand that process more, and actually understand the impact on those young lives better. And we have plans in the future now where we're inviting some of those young carers here to this building to make sure that we are providing all of the necessary support that they need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs Tina Clements, please.
Thank you chair. As has been said, the reports are there for everyone to read. But I just wanted to thank the members of my committee Prosperous Staffordshire for their commitment that this year we've got some amazing work going on. One of the biggest work projects we've currently got at the moment is the highways transformation plan. And I urge all members to look at that piece of work, because it doesn't just affect my committee, it affects each and every one of you with highways going forwards. And it's a massive piece of work, it's not just about roads. So just to put on record, my thanks to Davalairs and his team, and to the cabinet member for his hard work. It is really coming together, we're really getting some real good meat on the bones. And we need everybody's views going forward. So I'm not going to repeat anything that's already been said. Thank you chair.
Thank you. Councillor Jeremy Pert.
Thank you chair, and good afternoon members. I am also not going to repeat what's already in the very lengthy reports in front of you today. I would urge everyone in the council to, to go and look at some of the videos and linkages on the committee's webpage, just to see some of the stuff that is, is discussed at health committee and the rigor that is, is undertaken. I did however want to say three things this morning. First of all, I wanted to pay tribute to the skill and quality of the scrutiny officers, who often turn things around at literally no notice, and have very detailed dialogues right the way across both, right the way across the NHS, social care and public health. And without their insight and without their speed of reaction, we certainly would be all the worse. And it is really important when you look at something, the breadth of health, that we do have those active relationships and ability to triangulate across, to make sure that what is said in committee actually does make sense and is something that we're seeing. So I did want to put on record, certainly my committee's thanks to, to, to those scrutiny officers that, for the work that they do. Second of all, I wanted to thank the organisations who come in front of scrutiny, because they have rostered without fail, right the way through the pandemic, senior leaders who frankly have significant responsibility within the system, the NHS system, social care and within public health. And without the quality of people in front of us, I don't think we would be able to make the determination and assurance that our residents within Staffordshire look for. The final thing I just wanted to say is that we work within health with a variety of partners, particularly the districts and boroughs who have representatives on the committee. And I would like to thank them for the work that they do. But I also wanted to lay down a challenge, because I guess one of the questions is what could we all do more to support the health of our residents, whether we're on districts or boroughs or on the county council. And in the end, there are all things that we can be doing and should be doing, whether it's in terms of planning to ensure we have better homes, and that layouts of planning applications and master plans actually feed and, and work proactively to help support the health of the people living in those areas. It could be about encouraging exercise, it could be about encouraging healthy communities. So I would encourage that members pick up the dialogue about increasing healthy life expectancy and public health in all of the discussions that we have with, through the day, with, with, with those partners that we have. Thank you chair.
Thank you. Councillor Simon Tag, please.
Thank you chairman. Yes, just on, on the comments of councillor Pert there, I'd like to make reference to his committee healthcare and overview scrutiny, particularly as a, as leader of Newcastle Borough Council and also as a divisional member. And on page 50 reference to Wally's Quarry, I'd like to thank him as chairman and also members of his committee for the work they've done on this, which is the, you know, the biggest local health emergency in Newcastle for, for many years. And as it says in the report, you know, affecting both physical and mental health. We won't know the full picture of that for many years, but I think the committee have done a real good job of, of keeping tabs on the health implications of this, particularly by having the meeting they had up in Newcastle, which invited all Newcastle members as well. And they've continually come back to it. And my urge would be to the chair to continue to do that. Councillor Hockfield mentioned earlier about the, obviously the figures for complaints and also for odour levels have begun to drop and have gone to zero on some of the sites. But I think it's far too early to say whether we've succeeded in this. A lot of it is weather implicated the summer months. We don't have as much odour sticking around in the area at levels which are, you know, a nuisance and also potentially a health risk. So I think it's too early to say that. Nobody should be claiming credit for the success which has happened at the moment, which we seem to be having, because it could turn around so very quickly as the, the autumn approaches. I think the committee, the house scrutiny committee here and the ones at the districts will have a really important role still to play, and thank them for the role so far.
Councillor Alan White, please.
Thank you chairman. I stand to just thank the overview and scrutiny committees for their diligent work throughout the course of the municipal year. It is through good scrutiny that we make better decisions on behalf of the public. And that's the reason why the scrutiny committees are particularly important to the work of this authority. I sometimes hear it says that councillors weren't aware of something happening, or they weren't aware of this going on and that going on. Each week you get a Members Information Bulletin which sets out what's going on within the council, and it also sets out the work, what the scrutiny committees have been doing, and what the scrutiny committees have got coming up. If there's an area that you have interest about, then can I suggest that you get in touch with the chairman, the relevant chair of the scrutiny committee, to, to make your views known, so that when something does happen and you feel like you've been taken a bit by surprise, you're, you're on it and you've been reading about it through the Members Information Bulletin. I would ask the committee chairs to continue their good work, to keep holding the executive to account, because without us being held to account, we will make mistakes, because we're only human. So please do, carry on what you're doing, more power to your elbow, and thank you very much indeed for all the work you've done this year.
Councillor Greitrix, do you wish to respond to the debate?
Yes chairman, just to echo some of the comments that the other chairman have made. In relation to officers, councillor Pert referred to the short notice that had often been the case when reports were put together. I hadn't directly thanked the officers, but I do know that there's been a lot of chopping and changing between various committees and who's looking after them in terms of officer responsibility. So it's, it's my personal thanks that that has been achieved, without it being too much disrupted. And I certainly thank the, the comments of the, of the chairman.
Thank you. I move that the report be received, is that agreed? Councillor Sutton, will you move the consideration report please? Staffordshire Corporate Parenting and Report 2122.
So I, I so move the report and I speak now if I may, Mr Chairman. Why, why is this important? Why does this matter? Well, it matters because we are all in this chamber and all in this council, corporate parents and parents. We all have a responsibility to try and ensure that opportunities for children in our care and the care that they receive, and the care that, and what we do for care leavers also is important. We have changed how corporate parenting panel operates over the last couple of years. It now, it now relies heavily on the voice of what children are telling us that is important to them day in, day, day out. And the panel itself now is split into three, and those groups of councillors and other members of the panel meet with groups of young people to discuss and talk about those issues. And then the panel comes, whole of the panel comes together and listens, listens to that and listens to what is said. So it is far more interactive and it takes into account far more what the children in our care and care leavers are telling us. So I'd like to thank all the members of the panel for their time involved in, in, in helping the children in our care and our care leavers achieve better, better outcomes. And in particular, I'd like to thank some of the officers particularly involved in the Voice Project who have helped us change the way in which we do. And I'll leave members with this mantra, if it's not good enough for your children, and it's not good enough for your grandchildren, then it's not good enough for the children in our care.
Councillor Anedra, and while you're on your feet, would you like a second report please?
Thank you very much chairman. The children that are put into our care are the most vulnerable children in our community. Some of the traumas that these children have gone through in their short lives does not bear thinking about. I speak from experience, having been a foster and adoptive parent. And it breaks my heart to think there are some adults in this world that can treat children in such a terrible manner. Every child is a gift to this world and should be treated with the utmost love and care. My encounter with Staffordshire County Council Social Services and the care system started way back in the early 90s, 1991 to be precise. I have to say then, it was a battle of wills at that time, and he or she who shouted the loudest got to listen, was got to listen to. I have evidence to prove it. The reason I'm relaying this to you all is because how the situation has changed over the last decade. I wish to pay tribute to this county council for taking our children in care seriously. It is still work in progress and still, major work still to be done. But councillor Mark Sutton, you lead a very dedicated team of officers, and too many to name, you know, and all in person, who show their commitment and that they care. And for that, I just wanted to say, and I'm sure I speak for many councillors in this chamber, when I say one very big thank you to you and your team for all the hard work and dedication to our most needed children in this county. Long may it continue. Thank you chairman.
Thank you, well said. Councillor Jill Hood, please.
Thank you chairman. Firstly, I'd like to thank Mark Sutton for his excellent chairmanship skills within the corporate parent committee. It's certainly an eye opener when you're, when you sit on this committee. And I'd like to just share one thing that happened with one of our young looked after people. We attended the Voice Project over the road and this young person was there. And it came out during the discussion that they were deeply troubled by an episode that had happened when they were extremely young. Something had happened in the place where they were living, and the young person was labelled as psychotic. This young person had borne this grudge until he was 18. And just purely by chance, we had one of our officers who dealt with the official records, thousands and thousands of them, day after day. And he felt that the way he was dealt with was wrong and that he wasn't psychotic, it wasn't a psychotic episode. It was a behaviour that any young person would have displayed out of sheer anger and frustration, and he'd been judged wrongly. And the officer said to him, we can change that. We can actually take your records and we can redact the report that you felt was not truthful. And you can actually put your view of what happened that day. I will never forget the look on that young person's face, who was so hugely grateful that within the future, those records would reflect an accurate and true account of what had happened, and that he had been judged far too severely. And as a corporate parent, and Mark has already said that we are all corporate parents, we're responsible for those young people. And I think we have a profound effect on their lives and the duties that we carry out, both with the officers, social services, the young people, the foster parents, those who've adopted, are profound. And I thank you Mark. Thank you chairman.
Councillor Sutton, do you wish to respond to the debate?
So thank you for those comments from members that have, have spoken. And they are right in the hard work that the team, the teams do. There's a couple of points I would like to make. If there is a gap in corporate parenting, it's about the involvement of wider partners and businesses out there. So if any members have links or know people that have links to businesses that would like to be involved more in corporate parenting and offering opportunities for the children in our care, then please, 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 please come forward. And secondly, corporate parenting depends a lot on those people who provide day-to-day care for the children in our care. And I would like particularly to reference foster carers up and down this county. And also a little bit of a call out for people who are thinking about the idea of being a foster carer. And if they, if they are, if they've ever thought about it, please take that opportunity to come forward, find out a little bit more about it. Because we are told by foster carers, you know, how rewarding it is to be a foster carer and help one of the children that are in our care. So a little bit of a shout out to people out there that might be looking and thinking about being a foster carer. Take that opportunity please.
Thank you. I move that the report be received, is that agreed? 2021 Community Fund, 202122 Report and Next Steps. Councillor Wilson, will you move a consideration report please?
Thank you chairman, I so move. And if I can just say a few words as well, just to pull out some key points out of the report please. So the role of us as Staffordshire County councillors in supporting our residents, as you all know, is essential. And of course, our member fund does play a huge part in that. Every year, we look at the appropriate focus for the fund. And through the last year, 2021, 2020, of course, recovery from Covid was very key, very vital. The most challenging priority we and our communities had to deal with, and within a bigger picture of what the county council was doing, the member fund was used to help community activity to get going again in a safe way, to dust off planned projects that Covid had put a stop to, and to re-establish the long-term planning for the future. I'm really proud of Staffordshire's people for the way that they've stepped up, often immediately, to help those around them in a safe way, and continued to adapt through the pandemic and explore how else they could help. Of course, I'm proud too of us as members for the way that we've used this fund. Of course, I'm proud too of us as members for the way that we've used this funding to invest in driving the recovery in all our respective divisions. This report on the use of last year's fund contains a comparatively small number of examples, but excellent examples compared to the overall number of course that was submitted. But I do hope it gives you a sense of the range and variety of what our communities did and what we've been able to help with. We've almost helped, we've helped almost 160 different organisations last year across the county and the report, as you know, does tell the story of funding that was used in the right way and genuinely made a difference. And this year, as you know members, the community fund is continuing, I'm seeing huge numbers of applications, they are very, very worthy and I'm still hoping that we'll see more. There are still several months left of the community fund to go, but I'm sure you'll agree with me that this is an absolutely essential part of what we do as members and we should all be very proud of ourselves for how we've helped the community to contribute to the local organisations and events and all other aspects of life that the community fund has actually helped to fund and to contribute. Happy to take questions if there are any.
councillor White, would you like to second report and reserve your right to speak?
I will be seconding but reserve my right to speak only if necessary, Mr Jim.
councillor Timon Clements please.
Thank you Chair. In Tamworth, we've supported many projects but today I wanted to talk about just one of those projects and that's the Tamworth Hygiene Bank. The thought of any female not having access to sanitary products in 2022 really hit home with three of us in Tamworth as county councillors having girls as children. Marie and her team provide sanitary products to those in need and they also go into schools to ensure no young girl is without them in need. They also give out nappies to families who would struggle normally and then they can signpost them onto other services that they may require. We really appreciate the work that Victoria Wilson has done on this and having the monies to be able to support groups and I know there are many speakers but I just wanted to mention that one because we were all able to support that, I think it was £500 each, so there's a lot of money going to many people that need it.
Thank you. councillor Richard Cox please.
Thank you chairman. Yeah, community fund councillors, you know, I'm delighted to be able to say that this is a fantastic report, it reaches out to many members, groups within our county. But obviously if I draw down to my own division, I was able to reach out to 11 groups last year, I'm up to 13 just now, I wish there was a little bit more money available. But what's important is there weren't great amounts going to these groups, but the amounts given were making the difference. And I would urge obviously other members, and I've got a little bit of Burntwood in my county division, and I would urge the member for Burntwood North to consider, if he is actually truly working in the community as he says he is, let's see those communities benefiting from his allowance. He failed last year with his allowance to get to spend, to allow 2,500 and we've only got two applications so far. I make no apologies to say this because there's rhetoric consistently that he's working within the division. Well, I'm sorry, I beg to differ. Thank you Chair.
councillor Alan White, would you like to reserve to speak?
Only to pay tribute to councillors for the hard work they do in their divisions, isn't it amazing? A little bit of money goes a very long way across the county and how much we can multiply the effect of our county councillors' money. So thank you to all councillors for their efforts on the fund.
councillor Wilson?
Nothing in particular to add chairman, except just to reiterate that, yes, and I've said this before, but from small acorns, great oaks can grow and that's what we're doing here at Staffordshire County Council. Thank you.
Thank you. I move that the report be agreed, received, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Recommendations for the council, procurement regulations, proposed addition, the chair, so councillor Wavington, will you move a consideration report please?
Move consideration of the report, Mr Chair.
councillor Trowbridge, will you second?
Happily second that, thank you, Mr Chairman.
Mr Chairman, I move consideration of the report, just by way of brief background, members will be aware that the clinical commissioning groups no longer exist as of the 30th of June and we've now moved on to a structure known as the Integrated Care Boards and the Integrated Care Partnerships. During the period of time in which the, I suppose the constitution and the lay of the land for health and care is sorted out, we're going to move from a joint chair arrangements to a single chair arrangements and there is a requirement to amend the constitution in order for that to be facilitated, Mr Chairman.
councillor Philip White, would you like to second?
Thank you chairman, I'll second the motion and reserve the right to speak if necessary.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded, that recommendation contained report. Has been contained report be agreed, approved and agreed? Is it agreed?
Agreed.
I think everyone's getting hungry, so I'm just going to keep going throughout the agenda. So, report for the chairman of the Staffordshire Police and Fire and Crime Panel. councillor Cox, will you move a consideration report please?
Thank you chairman, yes, as vice chairman of the Police, Fire and Crime Panel for Staffordshire, I move the report to be noted and received by this council, thank you.
And councillor Mrs Charlotte Atkins please.
Thank you chairman. I'm sure that many people are aware that effectively the police service has gone into special measures and, you know, that means that they're failing their local community in terms of emergency response, in terms of child abuse cases and it seems to be that there's been a recruitment of a lot of young inexperienced recruits that have replaced experienced officers who have been laid off in the past. So I wondered what the panel was doing to get to the bottom of why this is happening and why we have this appalling situation that we are one of the few forces in the whole country alongside the Met that now have a failing police service. This is very worrying, particularly during a period of cost of living crisis when, you know, we could well have tensions increasing in communities because people get very worried about their financial situation. So how seriously is the panel taking this and what questions are they asking to turn this around as quickly as possible?
There are actually four forces across the country that are in special measures, not just two.
Sorry, I realise there are five.
Yeah, yeah, okay. councillor Cox, do you wish to respond, it's your choice.
I will respond. I think we're clearly aware of the issues following the reports. I think the term special measures is a bit unfortunate because actually it's a terminology that actually doesn't mean where it does. So I think we have to get the rhetoric correct, but nevertheless, that doesn't say to say Staffordshire were, police force was noted and I'm sure the new chief constable is clearly aware of this. And in particular, our role in holding the commissioner to account is that he also is aware of the situation and will be certainly monitored and addressed if the concerns are not being dealt with. I'm hoping that that may confirm to councillor Atkins.
Thank you. I move that the report be received, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Item 11, Questions Understanding Order eight, members, because 11 questions and answers have been circulated to members and published on our website. In accordance with the usual procedure, the question answers will be taken as read. It will allow each question five minutes to which to ask a supplementary question and to receive an answer. No debate allowed on the questions. councillor Pritchard to councillor Alan White. Thank you. councillor Oaks to councillor David Williams. councillor Clements to councillor David Williams. councillor Jay to councillor Wilson. councillor Ford to councillor Wilson. councillor Edler to councillor David Williams.
Abigail, sorry, I know you're all wanting your lunch, but I've got to say, thank you councillor Williams for your reply. My question to you is, is there any way that the work on the A34 can be moved forward please, before we start saying hello Australia through the crevices in Rutherford Bank? Thank you.
We will endeavour to look into that as deep as it gets, thank you.
councillor Pardaisi to councillor Jesel.
Chair, can you remind me, I can ask a supplementary and I can say a couple of things as well? Just as, okay.
You can ask supplementary for which you have five minutes to do so, but there's no debate on your initial question.
Okay, but I can debate the answer?
No, no. It is purely a new supplementary question.
Chair, why is it considering this is a life and death situation, I do not have an answer that says, you're quite right, we need to drop everything, sort this out and treat it like the emergency that it is?
Thank you, councillor Jesel.
Thank you very much chairman. As the response sets out quite clearly, that the role and function of the Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee has the role of holding the healthcare services to account, it's not a cabinet member role. However, I would add that at the Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee, or Health and Care Overview Scrutiny Committee, on the 11th of July, members considered a primary care GP access plan update report, which provided the context and key drivers to the current situation regarding general practice access in Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent. And they considered a report about the Integrated Care Board and System where members highlighted pressures, patient flow through hospitals and the need to scrutinise pressures across the whole system. Both reports and the webcast can be viewed on mod.gov. I can assure councillor Pardaisi that councillor Perd and his scrutiny committee regularly and thoroughly hold key members of the NHS to account and that is the role and function. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor, Mrs Charlotte Atkins to councillor Price.
Thank you, if I could just ask my supplementary, I'm due to meet with the learning trust and I'll certainly be exploring a lot of the issues. But what I want to be assured is that any consequences for education through Leake is discussed with the community because this may have a big impact on all schools in Leake. Now, back in the late 1990s, there was a plan to merge the two high schools. It was handled disastrously by the county council and I do not want to repeat of that situation because I think it's too important. So I do hope that the community will be fully involved and I'm thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about my views about what's happening there. Because clearly Leake High has got a very low role for a high school and so therefore the implications are very great. But I appreciate, you appreciate, that the Leake High site also includes two special schools, Meadows and Springfield and also a very nice all-weather pitch which I helped get them many years ago. So it is an important site and we do have to take on board all the issues for education in Leake, not just the disappointing report on Leake High School.
Thank you. councillor Afzal to councillor David Williams please. So, sorry, sorry Mrs Atkins, councillor Price to respond to your supplementary. Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much. Obviously, I am aware of the issues that are ongoing within Leake and there is also an alternative provision on site as well, which I did visit recently, which is doing some really, really good works. I've offered obviously to meet with yourselves to discuss the wider issue of the schools within Leake and the community and I shall set that meeting up as soon as possible so that we can discuss that further.
Thank you. councillor Afzal to councillor David Williams please.
No supplementary.
Thank you. Petitions. Does any member have a petition they wish to present? I believe Simon Tagg may have a petition. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, yes, I'd like to present a petition on behalf of residents, not only in my division but also across Newcastle relating to traffic management issues around the Wallis Quarry in Cemetery Road in Silverdale. It's calling for investigations into a double red painted line on the road and also issues to do with closing the lay-by across the road and also to make clear whose responsibility is to police and to monitor the traffic issues around Wallis Quarry. So I have a paper petition here of 2,060, that goes together with an online petition of 703, which will trigger an official response from the county council to this. And my view really is, we talked about Wallis Quarry earlier and we talked about the fact that, you know, we are seeing some moves in the right direction but this is far from over. The lorry issues is another really issue which gets up people's noses about blocking the road and it's a safety issue also, particularly when the site opens in the morning. I understand the operator has put in a planning application to allow lorries onto the site from 6am, an hour before the open, to stack because that's what we're doing on the road, stack on-site instead of on the road. But it is a major issue and it's the typical thing, an accident waiting to happen if we don't address it. So I would submit this petition on behalf of my residents, thank you.
Now, the petition has been submitted, that is the end of that item. So item 13, issues of public, there are no such items. Before we leave, can I please ask that everybody checks their pigeonholes this afternoon? There are urgent papers going to be put in there for everybody and we don't want it remain there till the next meeting in September. I think that's now the end of the, the end of the meeting, can I thank everybody for their participation and invite everybody to lunch? Thank you very much.